Good evening. Welcome to the August 4th, 2022, meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with Town Board enactment of Local Law Number 14 of 2022, adopted on May 24th, 2022. Our next meeting and those following will be held in person here at Town Hall and will also continue to allow for remote participation, so we ask you to continually check the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic who sustains one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you here with us tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Please do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall. We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another in the boardroom as it interferes with our recording equipment. Tonight, we also have Board Member Helen Burgess participating remotely. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it is their time to give testimony before the Board. Please be patient. If you find that you are having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the Town Clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the Board. We have very few items that are being adjourned tonight on the agenda, so we ask members of the public who speak to keep their comments limited to three minutes. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a date to be announced after the hearing. Those comments can be addressed to the Board Secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. And with that, I would ask for a motion that we approve the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, minutes are approved. And now on to adjournments.
Okay. Item 10 on the agenda is Kai Sterman and Mary T. Ryan. It's going to be adjourned to our September 1st meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, then on the decision calendar, the next ones I read will be adjourned till 8:18. Cloverleaf Realty Inc., East Quogue 535 Realty Inc., 40 Ocean View Drive LLC, Scott Slafter, and Adios Holdings. We have a couple that'll be adjourned to our...
Got to vote on those, yes?
We'll vote on the 8:18 ones first. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, the ones of September 1st that'll be adjourned is Lee Skolnick and Bill Patel and Zabit Kao Don.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and also on the calendar, Madeline Feldman and David Albert. I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopened.
Close?
Wait, wait, no, we want a discussion.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm gonna...
Oh, but don't close it.
Give me a second.
No, but don't close it yet.
I'm not gonna close it. I was just gonna ask, do we want to have a discussion here?
Yes.
I think that would be very nice.
Thank you very much. How are you, all right?
Sorry to interrupt.
All right, so I know, Susan, you had some comments?
I had some comments, yes. We received a revised request for the side porch, rear porch maybe. And they have submitted a new survey and a site plan, and it's essentially the same setback of 32 feet from the property line, but instead of a covered porch, they want it to be an enclosed porch. And it was confusing because the application said covered porch, and the original survey said covered porch, but during the presentation, they were talking about an enclosed porch with an airlock. So this is just to clarify that, and so I would suggest that we close the discussion tonight and vote on this at the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have...
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Sure.
Do you feel that that request to go from open to enclosed porch changes the application to the point where it should be reopened or resubmitted as an application?
I don't. It's a very small area, and it really, as I said during the hearing itself, it was referred to as an enclosed... I don't think it really makes a sizable difference, 32 feet from the property line, so I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if not, Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and that is for it to be for decision at our next meeting, I believe.
8:18.
Yes, the 18.
That was number two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll try again. Jesse Gatlin, I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Just before you vote on this, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. We did receive a letter from a neighbor with concerns about this application. It was received after the written comment period had closed. The Board had set a date. It came in after that. However, it was circulated to the Board, so you guys did get it. So, you know, oftentimes you say no written subs, we're not considering them, they've been received after the written comment period. Sometimes you say, well, we got it, we might as well add it. So the request to reopen is to accept that written sub if you are so inclined.
And if we aren't so inclined, then we don't have to accept it.
Correct.
We can not reopen.
Correct.
And it has to be unanimous vote to reopen.
Katie, can I ask a clarification point? Because I saw in my father was another letter from a neighbor.
Yep, and that one was received and discussed at the public hearing. That was from Susan Lynch.
It was received, it wasn't discussed.
Well, it was, because Mike referred to it, and the applicant had said, you know, I'm addressing that, it had to do with some of the...
Okay, fine.
So this is for the second letter.
All right, let me just put it out there one more time. Motion to reopen.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
I will vote aye, but I'm not happy on all these reopenings. People get things in late, and it's... But aye.
Chair votes aye, it's reopened.
All right. All right, then I'll move to close it after accepting the written submissions for a determination tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, and then we have Janet Zimmerman. I'll move to reopen to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopened.
Okay, after accepting the written submissions, I'll move to close with a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A opposed?
That's what I got, so I'm gonna change this, and so we're gonna go back to the beginning of the agenda. Application number one is 142 Toward Point LLC, 142 Toward Point Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-59-1-45. Applicant requests relief in the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed two-story dwelling. 330-84D Pyramid Height for a proposed pyramid encroachment in the amount of 1,212.3 cubic feet on the east side of the property. Two, 330-83A4 yards to allow a proposed deck higher than one foot above ground level to be located within the required front yard. 330-83C yards and 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts to allow a portion of the deck to be located within the required side yard for the principal building. Four, 330-83C and 330-76D to allow the proposed outdoor kitchen to be located within the total required side yard of the principal dwelling. And five, 330-83C and 330-76D to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required minimum side yard and total required side yard for the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The Board has jurisdiction? It's for Susan. Bruce, include an extra copy for Helen, because she's remote, but she'll pick it up later.
Okay. Susan. Bruce, whenever you're ready, I will swear you in.
Yeah, and what we tell you is Alexander Hand is our...
Okay.
I'll go first.
Okay, sure, if you can just state your name and address.
Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting, Main Street, Perchance.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, answer, your name and address.
Alexander Hand, Naistatman Ham Architects, 272 Toward Point Road, 7.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. You can tell us about the application whenever you're ready.
I'm just gonna hand out some exhibits here, and I'll walk you through them, there's only three of them, but hopefully help. Alex is our architect. Can you bring him closer? And let me explain to you what we want to do. We propose to demolish... If you can look, turn to your survey.
Yep.
We'll start there. Might be easier if you just rest it here, Alex, you know? So if you turn to the survey, what you're gonna see is, on the left-hand side is what exists, and on the right-hand side, we'll show you what we propose to do. Okay? Now, just look back here.
Did you get one?
You also have this. In orange depicts what's there on the property now, and what's in light blue depicts what's being constructed. These rectangles and this tank is the septic system.
Okay. I actually didn't get a copy, so I can...
Anything here?
Okay.
So I made that for you so you can understand we have a waterfront property.
Here's its picture.
We're on Toward Point Road. So we propose to demolish two single-family dwellings, a waterfront raised deck, and two framed sheds. We're gonna remove two cesspools and two LP tanks. We benefit from CO 4895 dated November 25th, 1966, for two one-story houses and one pump house. The pump house is the shed, essentially. Then the applicant would construct one single-family dwelling within an attached deck, outdoor kitchen on that deck, a swimming pool surrounded by a patio, a pool house, small pool house, and then a covered area over an existing patio. Existing dwellings that are to be removed are as close as 4.3 feet from the side lot line. The sheds are as close as 3.6 feet from the side lot line. The easterly shed here is as close as 19.4 feet from the road, and the raised deck that's attached to the deck is as close as 18 inches from the front lot line. The two cesspools, which are depicted on the survey, likely installed into groundwater, are as close as 37 feet from the surface waters of North Sea Road. Both the existing structures and the present lot configurations are authorized by ZBA Decision 1608 dated September 27th, 1965. I've given you a copy of those. In that decision, the Board approved the transfer of a seven-foot by 92.2-foot strip of land from the adjacent parcel to the north because at that time, these dwellings were actually across the property line. So in 1965, the Board could do that. It was warm to see it was done by Dave Gilmoreton Sr. You have a copy in front of you. It also gave us relief on the side yard setbacks between the dwellings and the side lot lines, and that's contained in the decision I just handed out. So my point is, the existing setbacks for this lot are not pre-existing zoning. They're actually authorized by variance, which makes total sense because they would have crossed the property line at that time. This property contains 10,770 square feet, or 0.247 acres, and is located in our 10 zoning district. The subject parcel is also a waterfront parcel fronting North Sea Harbor. The lot line adjacent to North Sea Harbor would be your front lot line. The lot line at Toward Point Road would be a rear lot line, and the two remaining lot lines are side lot lines. In the R10 zone, your front yard setback for principal is 30 feet, for a rear yard is 30 feet, an individual side yard is 10 feet, and a total side yard is 25 feet. And for accessory structures, the setback in an R10 zone for side and rear yard is eight feet, and the structures have to be 40 feet from the road, and that's your basic dimension of table. So what I'd like to do is just go through the variances individually so we understand them. The first is relief from Town Code 330-84D, which is pyramid height, for a total pyramid encroachment of 1,212.3 cubic feet. The existing pyramid nonconformity is 1,227.3 cubic feet. Thus, the pyramid compliance is improved with this application.
This is the existing area that's outside the pyramid on the existing layout, and this is proposed in here, this shaded area that we see on this.
Okay. So that's the first aspect. So the idea is we'd be knocking down these two houses that have these existing pyramid encroachments. Although we'd be building another house, the encroachment would be less than what we have today. The second part of this discussion was, according to the Building Department, is relief from 330-83A4, which states that the following accessory structures may be located in any front or rear yard, and that is unroofed steps, decks, patio, terrace, not higher than one feet above ground level. The first thing we need to understand is that the existing deck off the waterfront house, the house closest to the water, is a raised deck, and its location is about 18 inches from the front lot line, which is, in this case, is essentially the shoreline. So the Building Department takes the position that the attached deck violates this provision. But understand, if you go to the survey, under our proposed plan, we're taking a deck and a house, and the deck, we'll start with the deck, 18 inches from the front lot line, and we're moving it back 40 feet from the front lot line. The required front yard, as I previously stated, would be 30 feet, so we're at 40 feet instead of 30 feet, which is the front lot line. So...
I'm sorry, Bruce, you said...
So the raised deck that we proposed...
You said you're gonna move it back to 40 feet from the front property line?
Yes.
The deck.
We're knocking it down. The new deck is 40 feet from the front lot line. The existing deck today, which is sealed, is 18 inches from the front lot line. Okay?
Try that today.
Now, the next one is 330-83C.
How tall is the deck?
Yeah, how raised is it?
How raised? The existing deck is at elevation 6.9 feet, and it's right next to the water, so...
And proposed?
And proposed is gonna be at 7.6.
7.6?
Sorry, excuse me, 7.5.
But not the elevation, like how tall is it? It says it can't be taller than 18 inches, right?
No, can't be taller than one foot.
One foot.
Yeah, one.
So it's...
So the existing raised deck is noncompliant because it counts into the setback because it's more than a foot above grade.
Right.
If you measure from the seaward side, it's five feet above grade. If you measure where it attaches to the house, it's more like three and a half feet.
That's what you're saying, it's six feet above grade.
Yeah, that's correct.
And proposed, I'm sorry, seven what? Seven?
7.5.
Now, understanding these heights, we are in a flood zone, we're in an AE6 flood plain, which compels us to site the house at elevation eight, and that's why the deck, you walk out of the house onto the deck, and so that's why the deck is at the elevation it's at. So the next part is 330-83C and 330-76D to allow a portion of the deck to be located within the total side yard for the principal dwelling. The first thing that is worth discussing is that 76D reads, accessory buildings and structures, including private garages, should not be placed within a required front yard, a required side yard, nor total required side yard for a principal dwelling, except as elsewhere, as allowed elsewhere in this chapter, which I've always presumed to mean that you could apply accessory structures as per the Table of Dimensional Regulations. The next is 83C, which reads, every part of a required yard shall be open to the sky unobstructed, except for retaining walls and accessory buildings in a rear yard. And then it goes on to talk about cornices and the 18 inches, and I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So the Building Department takes the position that the portion of the attached deck and outdoor kitchen, which is essentially a barbecue thing located on that deck, violates the code even though the deck is set back 40 feet from the front lot line and the kitchen is set back 55 feet from the front lot line. In other words, the deck and the kitchen are located outside of what we call the required front yard. Now, and it also, it's important to note that both the deck and the kitchen exceed accessory setbacks. So we have here at 10.3 feet off that northerly side lot line, which I already said the accessory would be eight feet, and it would even exceed the total side yard because, even for the principal, because it's set back in this direction by 20 feet. So the total side yard in an R10 would be 25 feet, more than 30. The third thing is 330-83C and 76D relating to the swimming pool located within a minimum side yard and total side yard for the principal structure. Again, the pool is actually located, how far? 49.3 feet from the front lot line, where the required rear lot line of yard is 30 feet. So we're 19 feet outside of what's called a required rear yard. That pool is 10.3 on one side, 17.2 on the other side, that's this way. So even if you add those up, you wind up with 27.5, in excess of 25 feet, which would be the total side yard setback for a principal dwelling in an R10 zone. So that's the basic zoning of this. We have, I've handed out tax maps, and I think probably everyone's familiar with Toward Point, and Toward Point is loaded with nonconformities. These are waterfront parcels. Many of the parcels are very, very shallow, so anything you do with them require pretty significant variance relief. All of it's essentially built, I'm not aware of any vacant lots here, and part of the application, we provide you with dozens of variance relief. I don't think I need to go into them. I think it's understood that this is an area of the town that has historically received very significant relief because of the hardship relating to the areas of the property, the depth of the property, the fact that they're waterfront properties, and the like. So these lots along Toward Point range something like 6,000 square feet to maybe 18,000 square feet. So we're kind of in the middle among the range of lots that are found along the stretch of road. As to the variance criteria we submit, there'd be no impact to the neighborhood whatsoever because the zoning condition of the lot would be greatly improved if the variance were granted. Those improvements would include the nonconforming use, having two houses on one lot would be eliminated. So we will eliminate that. The pyramid nonconformity that exists today would be reduced, small amount, but reduced nonetheless. The side yard nonconformity with respect to the existing houses would be eliminated, and the proposed dwelling complies with respect to the side yard setbacks that exist today, even though they got variance relief in '65 for the condition that exists today, and it specifically lists the side yards. The existing deck would be removed from the required front yard, and the proposed attached deck would be located outside of the required front yard. The noncompliant accessory structures respective side yard variances, side yard setbacks, would be eliminated, and all proposed accessory structures would comply to the applicable accessory structure setbacks. And then finally, the noncompliant street setback would be eliminated for that shed. The second part is the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method other than an area of variances, and this is because a building inspector has ruled that we need all of these variances that are listed in the notice and so forth. So that's why we're here. I will tell you, we've been at this for several years, and our understanding along was that we could do this without need of any variances. But there has been apparently a change in interpretation of the Building Department, which they're entitled to do, and that's why we're here.
Changes that relates to what?
This business about how these accessory structures have to comply with principal setbacks, and I disagree with it because in my experience, we've never applied that, and also that the accessory structures that we're talking about here are not located in any required yards. So that's just my opinion, but that's why we're here.
But you have a pyramid violation anyways, too.
Excuse me?
You also have a pyramid violation.
Yeah, but in the past, we've been grandfathered that as well, and...
The Board has never grandfathered new dwellings.
No, the Building Department has.
I mean, maybe...
I mean, I'll hand up, this is one we did a couple doors down at 166 Toward Road. We handled these permits, and you'll see that we took a house that was noncompliant with respect to side yard setbacks, with respect to pyramid. Between that house and the side lot line were a series of sheds, and we were able to do that.
And we don't need to spend a lot of time about the Building Department.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's why. So we believe that the variances are not substantial, because it's important to recognize the noncompliance of this as being greatly improved. All necessary structures, again, comply with the accessory setbacks listed in 33011 of the Town Code. And then we also submit the grand variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Existing setbacks from wetlands would be greatly increased from 18 inches to 40 feet. The zoning nonconformities would be eliminated, or at least substantially brought into compliance with the current zoning regulations, interpretation thereof. The cesspools located as close as 37 feet from the water would be pulled out, eliminated, and in a new compliant IA OUT system that complies in all respect to the Health Department would be installed. Full runoff controls would be installed as required. The Board should be aware that the applicant has applied for and obtained a wetland permit from the town of Southampton. Should also be aware that our permits... from the town of Southampton. Should also be aware that our permits from the BEC are imminent, and that the...
Have you submitted the wetlands permit?
We submitted and have been granted a wetlands permit.
Yeah, have you submitted?
They've submitted to us.
No, I'd be happy to put that in.
If you could, that would be great.
Yep. So ultimately, we submit the benefit to the applicant, if the variances are granted, greatly outweigh any detriment to the public health, safety of the neighborhood. Here, the benefit to the applicant would be an upgraded redevelopment of the lot, obviously. And we submit there is no detriment to the public health and safety of the neighborhood resulting from the project as proposed. So we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Just wanted to ask now how big the existing, I don't know if you have an answer to this. The existing dwellings are compared with the proposed dwelling, which is 1,066 square feet?
Okay, that's listed on the survey.
Is it?
Yeah, the lower right-hand corner. So the building footprint, existing, which includes all the buildings, is 1630, and that goes to 2044. How big is the house, is what he's trying to say? Do you know?
The house is that less 200. So it would be 2000, well, just a second, let's do the math. So it'd be 1,000, about 1,844.
Okay.
1,844 square.
So we're not talking about having a bigger house? It's actually, this one's 1666, so it's...
Footprint, but they have multiple houses.
Right, right.
Right.
There are multiple small houses.
1844 footprint?
Yeah, 1844 for the primary structure.
For primary structure, okay.
I'm sorry, 1844 existing?
No, existing is six, I'll tell you right now here. Existing is 1630.
1630, it says.
Proposed together with the accessory pool house is 2044, and the primary structure is 200 less than that.
Okay.
Yep. Sir, if you would like to speak, if you can go out in the hallway to speak, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay. So I just want to mention, you know, initially, that when we have the applications where it's waterfront property, the rules kind of go backwards because the waterside is the front yard, and what would have been the front yard is now the rear yard. So that kind of throws things off a bit from the start. And then you have the issues with wetlands and nondisturbance. So I understand that there are constraints in this property, and Bruce also gave us a breakdown of a whole bunch of other variances that have been granted. Many of them were granted long ago before I was on this board. But nevertheless, a lot of them, we have granted variances. This board has granted many variances. So lots in the vicinity.
I looked at those variances, and I read every single one of them.
Okay.
And very few are pyramid variances. And if they are, it's only in the hundreds. So I just wanted to say that there have been a lot of variances, but in terms of pyramid variance, it's not, you know...
Well, the reason is pyramid is a relatively new thing.
Yeah, okay, but still.
Right.
There's a lot of variance relief, but it's not all pyramid relief, so...
Right. Yeah, pyramid, I believe it was, was it 1984, 85 when pyramid law came into effect?
Oh, it was 2001.
2001, even better. Wow, wow. The 90s, okay.
And I also went to the property, and it's clearly the houses that exist are like shoved up against the property line practically. I mean, you know, that's why the pyramid, because they're not two-story houses. I mean, they're, you know, got a little bit of a peach pitch roof, but that's what is causing the pyramid. And I went through the neighborhood, and I didn't see an awful lot of double, you know, like two-story houses. So, you know, it's a little bit of a concern for me because it's a very, it's a very nice neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood. But, and there's no demarcation between the properties, except for this one wooden fence on the one side of. Most of it's just open land, and, you know, like you just sort of float across everybody else's property. And I'm a little concerned because I didn't see any swimming pools. And so I was a little concerned about having the swimming pool so close to the property edge, and what kind of vegetation or any other kind of barriers that you could possibly provide. And then what else did I have? I had something else. This had to do with the generator. Was it the generator or something? No, maybe that was another case. I'll have to look. But anyhow, it's a very open area. I mean, you almost can't tell where the property lines are. Everybody has like backyards, and you know the area. It's lovely. It's absolutely lovely. So, but I didn't see any pools. Are there pools in the area?
There actually are two pools within a few lots of the property. There's actually, our property is here. There is a swimming pool here. There's also one at the corner lot at the bend in the road, approximately here, just off the map.
And are they, is there vegetation screening around those pools?
Yeah, most of them do, yes.
Yep. You'll have an opportunity to speak. Okay, yeah, okay.
And this would be the intent here, too, that there would be not only the pool house would screen it, but also vegetation.
Yeah, yeah. Also, the proposed pool, the relief that you're requesting for the pool is for the pool to be a side yard, correct?
Yes.
I'd say if it's accessory, we exceed the side yard setback. You apply, accessory setback is eight feet. We're nine feet. If you want to apply the principal, it's 10 feet instead of nine feet. So...
But what's the totals, the total side yard setback is 25?
Yeah, we'd be at 27 as proposed.
27, and so...
We're not violating that at all under any, you know, and when we say total side yard, you know, it all comes down to, are these accessory, can you apply an accessory setback on these lots? Because think about it for a second. If your required rear yard is 30 feet, okay, that's the distance from the road back 30...
I think we're getting all over the place here. We don't need to do that, okay? We have an exact application before us. You can have a debate with the building department, a debate with the town attorney's office about what the...
Let me just say one more sentence. If the required rear yard is 30, understand that your street yard setback is 40 feet, which means you could never apply an accessory setback.
Feel free to make those arguments to the building department, to the town attorney's office. We do not have time to be able to spend a half hour having that discussion. We just don't. Okay. Any other questions, members of the board?
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Because I know you handed up stuff. I didn't get a copy of everything, which I don't need. But did you hand up a revised survey, or was it just the site plan? Because there is a note that says the survey and plan shall be updated to include the proposed porch and the total lot coverage. So I just wondered, was that...
That was in the comments.
Did you, have you done that, or can you do that?
The majority are there, it's on the lower right-hand corner.
Did it include the proposed porch? I guess maybe they didn't think it did.
Has it been done since you received that comment, or does it still need to be?
There's a hole.
I see proposed porch on here.
Oh, the proposed porch is within the lot coverage. Yeah, that's within the footprint. We're counting that, it's within the footprint.
You are. Okay. Well, because like I said, Marge's notes suggest that maybe it wasn't. So I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Okay. I'll review.
Okay, yeah, just confirm.
You can make that up if needed, but I was not aware it wasn't there.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Okay. Is there anyone in the public who is here in the room this evening? I'll ask after I ask people in the room for people who are on Zoom who would like to be heard in connection with the application of 142 Todd Point LLC for the property located at 142 Todd Point Road in North Sea. If you'd like to give your comments, I would need you to come up. Or you can go to the podium, whichever you prefer.
Joseph Mendola at about 135 Todd Point Road.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Joseph, you can go to the microphone, please.
I need your last name to get out of it.
Yes.
Mendola, M-E-N-D-O-L-A.
Thank you.
Okay, you can give us your comments.
The first comment I have is, what the neighbors were sent was this survey. It is illegible. I can't read it. I'm over 70 years old. My eyes aren't this good. I don't know if I can show this to you. You can't read anything on it. So I really have no idea what they were doing to like...
Please go back to the microphone, sir, because otherwise we don't get...
I really have no idea what they were planning until tonight. That's why I came.
Okay, okay, all right.
Also, it's mentioned about pools.
Yeah.
Pools he's mentioning, the lots are more than twice the size of the lot they're talking about, that those two pools are on. That is all I have to say.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Yes. Just have to swear you in if you can state your name and address, please.
Diane Deutschman, 136 Todd Point Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
I'm presuming, and I forgot to ask, that you're neighbors, are you next door?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We are to the east.
Okay.
And this, number one, anything that violates pyramid law, I'm against. I mean, we worked hard in the village. I was part of it to get a pyramid law, and I don't want them to exceed it. But this place is right next door to me, and there's hardly any space between us. They're putting up this house. They're putting the generator. They're putting the air conditioning unit just about on top of my house, to the east. And I would like to see you maybe flip that house so it went the other way. But we are totally against this.
Okay, all right.
And the thing about the pools, I don't know where these pools are, but they're not around our places.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who is here in person who would like to be heard in connection with this application? If not, is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of 142 Todd Point LLC for property located at 142 Todd Point Road in North Sea? If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Okay, thank you.
I had a follow-up question. Bruce, you had mentioned that you're in a flood zone, right? Are many of the houses in this neighborhood, have they been elevated to comply with FEMA zones? Like, do they, or are they just...
It's a mixed bag.
Some comply, some don't, some are pre-existing.
Are there some new houses that have gone up recently?
Not really.
There's one under construction now, and others that are within the last probably five years, there's a couple of them.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Because one of the things about this, folks, just so you understand, is that if this property is in a FEMA zone, and you decide to do a major renovation on your house, guess what? You're going to have to raise your house, and you're going to have to get pyramid relief in order to have it be legal in the town of Southampton. So this is an issue. That is, that goes on throughout the town as we deal with properties in flood zones where the existing homes aren't protected from flooding concerns. And then they decide to renovate them, and then, yeah, you've got to raise the house. And so we've had applications in other areas of the town where, you know, people are very upset because someone is asking for pyramid relief because they're rebuilding their house. Well, it may become a time that you'll have to rebuild your house, or one of your neighbors will have to rebuild their house, and you very well may need pyramid relief at that point. Sir, if you want to come back up, feel free.
The other new house on Todd Point Road?
I believe that they did raise the house to leave the requirement. They didn't go for a pyramid variant.
Maybe they were able to pull it off.
It is doable. It's the same size lot. They just don't have a pool, a garage, a pool house, a generator house, and an air conditioning room on the property with the house.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are you sure I have a question? Do you have any, are there any opportunities to put the mechanicals in a different place that would not be offensive to that particular neighbor?
I think it's possible that if we could be allowed to put it closer to the front yard, it would, because I feel like if I flip it to the other side, the other neighbor says something also.
Of course, right.
So we could look at an option to try to get the mechanicals into the front portion of the yard.
By the street or the water?
It'd have to be by the street. I prefer to keep it away from the water.
It would be technically the rear yard.
Yeah, it would be the rear yard, yes, yes, towards the street side. We would be willing to look at an option to do that, to make things better for the next door neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, and look, whenever possible, if neighbors can communicate with each other about their concerns and see if something could be modified to address these neighbors' concerns, I mean, these people came, went out of their way to come here to express their concerns, and obviously, they're kind of upset. So I would encourage a dialogue and a conversation to be had. Okay?
I have one more comment. The neighbors don't even know who owned the property. They've owned it for over two years. We don't even know who it is.
Okay. I can't speak to that, sir, other than to tell you that there are deeds in the Suffolk County Clerk's Office that say who the owner is. It's all of record.
I know you are, that's how you meet your neighbors.
Well, but I mean, the deeds are there.
If possible.
Yeah, yeah. No, and when it's an LLC, it's just the name of an LLC. I understand. Okay, all right.
Would the board consider granting variances if they moved the mechanicals, you know, if they need a variance for the rear yard? Would you consider variances for that?
If that appeases their concerns, I would never...
I mean, some of them it would.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would have to see...
I have to see the whole package. I have to see the whole package, frankly.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're, you know...
So maybe we need them to come back?
Absolutely.
Yep. Yep.
The, you know, from a neighbor's perspective, things like this are always upsetting because or distracting because you have a new house going in. It has to be raised by FEMA standards. Pools, you know, will create need for fencing and things like that, and it will, in essence, change the feel and look of your specific community that you have. It's part of change and growth that goes on in our communities, you know?
But from my perspective, I really would like to see the whole package. And don't we have to get something from, isn't there some agency that we still need to hear from?
We have to hear from the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and we'll get a report from the Conservation Board, but it'll likely just say that the plans are consistent with...
Okay, we need the wetlands permit.
Yeah, we have a...
Okay, so we need some materials to still be submitted, so...
I mean, you can choose to not change the mechanicals, but...
Yeah.
No, I think we'd like to, we'd like to make things better for the neighbor, I'm sure. I'm sure the owner would like to do that. And as the architect, I think I can make that happen. I also live on Todd Point Road, so I am very sensitive to the issues.
Yeah, and also consideration about the swimming pool and, you know, what can be done to...
Well, I think like some of the others, you don't know they're there. We plan on planting it so that it's more internal, and it's not something that's out there causing interference.
Yeah, and this is not, they're not asking for setback relief for the swimming pool.
No, no, I know, I know.
It's a little tricky, a little tricky there in terms of saying, you know, with screening and all of that, actually, in terms of distance, it's...
Or lot coverage relief.
Correct, correct. It's because these folks have, the yard's flipped.
Is the fence directly abuts the, where's the fencing for the pool?
It doesn't abut. One fence is very close to the pool on the north side of the lot, towards the southeast side. It's on the lot line.
Okay. All right. So when we'd like to come back?
Can I make one other comment?
Sure.
If I may, please. I also wanted to notice, with respect to pyramid and the location of the house, we also took a look at the way the lot was, and we came a little closer to the north side of the lot because that's more heavily wooded anyway. And we wanted to make sure we kept the sky open on the more open side of the lot. So that was sort of the choice made there to better blend it in with the existing conditions.
Okay. So we have room in our agenda at our next meeting, which is August 18th, and we also have room in our agenda the following meeting, which is September 1st.
Let's do August 18th.
August 18th.
Okay. So we're keeping the public hearing open until August 18th. In the meantime, please have a conversation with Mr. Anderson. I'm hoping that... Okay, folks, you have to go to the microphone, sir. I'm sure Mr. Anderson will be happy to provide you with one. He's right here. Feel free to speak with him in the hallway.
Can you apply all the neighbors with legible prints of what you plan on doing?
Sir, you can have that conversation with him in the hallway, okay?
I thought you were saying it up here.
No, no, we have plenty of applications. We spent almost, well, about 45 minutes on this one alone. Okay, all right. So Bruce, you were the lead on this one?
Okay, so I move that we adjourn this, we hold it open, and we adjourn this for discussion at our next meeting, August 18th.
Second.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio?
Aye.
Tribbletie?
Thank you all for being here. Have a good rest of your night.
Okay. Item two on the agenda is John and Nancy Bowden, 35 Fanning Avenue in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-263-4-27. Applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-11.2F special standards to allow a proposed accessory apartment to be located on the second floor of an existing detached garage in a nonconforming lot that is less than 30,000 square feet, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening. Unless you're, either of you is an attorney, that's where you are. You can state your names and addresses, please.
Nancy Bowden, 35 Fanning Avenue, Hampton Bay.
John Bowden, 35 Fanning Avenue.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
We have an existing...
We have an existing garage with a second story that has never, it was built in 96. We've never used it. We're having to house her brother on our property.
Yep, I read about that.
That disabled, not terribly, but, so we're just trying to give him some privacy to live his life, and we can live ours. Right now, he's in our house.
Okay. And basically, and basically, the only relief that you're, that you're asking for is that the lot is less than 30,000 square feet. In particular, it's 18,948 square feet rather than 30,000.
Yes.
And so when we have these kinds of applications for accessory apartments, because the intention of the accessory apartment law is to allow people to do exactly what you're proposing to do, which is to help people to be able to afford to live in this town and help family members.
And be owner occupied.
Right, right. We, and it has to be owner occupied. You know, we often grant relief from the lot area requirement in the accessory apartment law. Have you heard from any of your neighbors?
Yes, I've heard from all of them.
Okay, and what have they told you?
They said they had no issues with. Wondering why we were going for a variance anyway.
Yeah, yep, yep.
I think it's a good application, to be honest with you folks.
Yep.
We do grant relief, sort of relief many times.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you know, it's unfortunate that you have to come in here and even go through this process, because we've written such restrictive zoning on accessory apartments, which needs to be corrected, and we're telling that to the, so, sorry you're here and have to go through this, but.
I'm just looking to do it right, that's all.
Okay.
I'm sure everybody's seen.
That's what you want to do.
And we appreciate that. Any other questions? Katie, do you have any questions?
I'm okay with it.
No, okay.
I'm fine with it, too.
Okay, all right. Next, well, first I want to ask, is there anyone from the public who is here this evening in connection with the application of Bowden for property located at 35 Fanning Avenue in Hampton Bay that would like to be heard? Is there anyone on Zoom who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Bowden for property located at 35 Fanning Avenue in Hampton Bay? If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Okay. If not, Helen, you have this one.
I had the opportunity to visit the property and meet with Mr. and Mrs. Bowden. I have no problem with this application, so we can close the public hearing, leave it open for written submissions until August 19th, if necessary, with a decision on September 1st.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chuvatai, thank you both for being here. Have a good night. You don't need to be here at the September 1st meeting. You can just, you can reach out to Candace the next day.
We'll watch us on Zoom.
We'll watch us on Zoom. All right, have a good night.
Take care, folks.
Take care.
Thank you. Okay, item three on the agenda is Donald Lynn Darling, 60, Inlet Road West in Shinnacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-176-1-32. Applicant requests relief from following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed second story addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. One, Town Code 330-84D for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 2,767 cubic feet, 977 cubic feet on the west side, and 1790 cubic feet on the east side. And two, Town Code 330-11, Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of 10.1, 10 feet, 1 inch, where 20 feet is required, and a total required side yard setback of 23.1, where 45 feet is required. In addition, applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-11 for a principal front yard setback of 39.1 feet, where 40 feet is required to allow an existing unroofed deck to be converted to a screened porch with a second story deck, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening.
Good evening for the applicant, Kimberly Judd, 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York. I also have Sean Leonard, architect, and John Darling, if you want to swear them in.
Sure, if you can both just state your names and addresses. You don't have to stand, but you can just raise your hand and.
John Darling, 60, Inlet Road West, Hampton Bay.
Okay. Okay, and you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you.
So just to start off, there's an aerial photo in your package I'd like you to take out, because it's very instructive on what's going on here. This property contains a little over 10,000 square feet, and it's located in the R20 zoning district, so it's non-conforming as to size. It's received several variances over the past 35 years, and I submitted a single and separate abstract. You'll see also, there was a variance here to unsplit the lot, and looking at the aerial, I assumed that the common ownership was the lot right in front of it, right? Because that makes sense. It's a flag lot, my lot. It's not. It's this lot to the side over here. So I've never seen a common ownership like that, and both of them were improved, and then this board in 1978 granted a variance to split them while they were both improved. So to me, that says there was an upzone at some point. It probably went from R10 to R20. It became non-conforming. This same person owned it. That a house here, a house here. This board granted a variance back in 1978 to divide them, and then you gave another variance before that, before the split, because that's when it was still conforming as to size to have the side yards where the house presently exists. So this whole variance request is being generated by a second story addition. We're not encroaching any further into the side yards, and I thought I was special until I heard Bruce's application. It's the same thing. It used to be old building department interpretation. When you got a variance on your side yards, it ran with the land, but it doesn't, the building department interpretation has changed. Now, if you build a second story, you have to come in for the setbacks, again, even though you had it for the first story. And we need pyramid anyway, so that's what we're here to, before you today. So we're looking for a pyramid, because we're doing a second story, and we need pyramid a total of, I have to look at Marge's.
27, 27.
Yes.
2767.
And we're looking for the side yards, and it looks like it's a lot of relief, but you have to remember that we had a variance in the past, because the way it's written up is 10 feet, where 20 is required, but we had gotten a variance back in 1962 to have side yards of 10 feet and 13 feet, and we're not going to go beyond those side yards. So the first story of the house right now, it's, I think it's a relatively modest sized house right now. It's a little over 1,000 square feet, and what they want to do is put a second story addition of 910 square feet on the second floor. So like I said, the variance request on paper, when you look at the edge, you're like, oh my God, they're looking for a lot of side yard relief, but then we got a variance back in 1962 to have those setbacks. And then when you put the second story on top of it, we need the pyramid request. So as far as the character of the neighborhood, the property right in front of us has a second story, which I thought was the one that we were in common ownership with, but it's not. And all the houses across the street are second story. So my client did speak with the neighbors and spoke to them about the application. I don't think there was any, anybody that was upset about it, but we'll see. And the last variance that we're requesting is the deck. If you look on the survey, we're looking to enclose this front deck, and we're only looking for less than a foot, because this deck here is supposed to be 40 foot from this front property line.
Yes.
And it's 39.1. And we did look at Marge's comments, the shed. There was a CO granted for the shed, but it's not conforming as to setback. It's got to be 10 and 10. My client understands that. They will move the shed to be conforming.
Okay, and we would do a condition if the decision were.
And the shower and the fence, those are all comments, too?
The shower needs to get a permit, but I don't think the fence does. I have a CO for a fence. It might be an old one, but.
Yeah, just legalize any existing fences.
Yes.
It does, it does. The house sits in front of the flag lot. Has that been granted pyramid relief?
No, I didn't see it, but again, curiously, when you said that my house right here, their house, already has pre-existing violation, which they didn't know.
Been before then.
And pyramid is, these houses are a lot older, and they may have pyramid violation, but we don't know until they come in and seek a second story addition from the board.
Yep.
And there was a variance granted across the street, right across the street for Connolly that I submitted.
Yep.
That had some pyramid relief.
Right, right. So, and so we grant pyramid relief from time to time, and particularly when there's a FEMA issue, it's something that we want people to have their houses be safe from flooding incidents. In this instance, we have pyramid relief of 2767 cubic feet, which is within the range of what we grant from, you know, fairly frequently. Nevertheless, there may be questions of members of the board about that, but otherwise, from my perspective, this is a modest application. So, any questions from members of the board?
I think it's a good application.
Just a question about the ceiling heights for the first floor and the second floor?
The first floor is currently eight feet, and the proposed second floor will also be eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Were there some comments?
We actually, Kim already went over the comments.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I wanted to ask if there is anyone here in the room, in the public, who would like to be heard in connection with the application of Darling? This is for property located at 60 Inlet Road West in Shinnacock Hills. If you'd like to speak to us, you just come on up, okay? If not, is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Darling for 60 Inlet Road West, Shinnacock Hills? If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No one up here.
Okay, all right. If not, Keith, it's yours.
Okay, seeing, hearing, knowing, I'll move to close the application, leaving it open for written subs to 8/19 with a determination on, I think it's 9/1, I want it, 9/1, right? 9/1.
Okay.
Just make sure you take care of Marge's concerns, okay?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Chuvatai, thank you all for being here. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is Flying Point, 1080 Real Estate LLC, 1080 Flying Point Road in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-178-2-6. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed three-story dwelling. One, 330-83K yards, as it relates to 330-11 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback of 30 feet where 50 is permitted. And two, 330-11 to allow a three-story dwelling where a maximum of two stories is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening.
Good evening. For the applicant, John Bennett, Bennett and Reed, 212 Woodman Lane, Southampton, New York. This is not a three-story building. It's a two-story building, but we'll get into that a little bit later.
Yes, and the building code was changed, and, yeah, we'll talk about it. You'll talk about it.
But I'll kind of try to agree with that. This is a fairly classic application. You have a, in terms of what has to give, you know, when you have a, when you have tension between wetland setbacks and zoning setbacks, it's been the last 40 years since the, in 86, since the imposition of, it's a little bit more than 40 years. The first wetlands code in the town, this board has always recognized that when you have a wetlands, tension between a wetland setback and a zoning setback, obviously, the more protective environmental setback has to prevail. So this is a 2.64 acre parcel. What's proposed here is a two-story house. There's the architect's pyramid sketch, but also Bob Smith was kind enough to put a pyramid sketch on the survey, so it conforms. This is the rear yard, since it's a non-oceanfront waterfront lot. We're proposing a 2,000-square-foot two-story, two-bedroom house. The proposed house covers about 1,000 square feet, the deck about 200 square feet, proposed steps 45 square feet, and there's a ramp at 45 square feet. So the total proposed lot coverage on this almost three-acre parcel, well, 2.7 acre parcel, is 4.5%. Interestingly, DEC, which gave a permit on this, the upland coverage issues are 20%. So here we are, asking for relief so we can construct this very modest two-bedroom house on a pre-existing lot that was, that has these wetlands issues. You get only to, since it's a rear yard in an R60 zone, it's 100 feet, and the reduction, the automatic reduction only gets you to 50 feet, so we're asking for 30 feet, which is where both the DEC and the Conservation Board have cited the house. The, obviously, the wastewater systems are in front of the house. Everything's squeezed in here as tightly as possible, not an aggressive application at all. 2,000 square feet, two-bedroom. So again, this is an issue where you've seen this time and time and time again, where the wetland setbacks essentially dictate the type of relief we're asking you for. We've pushed this as far away from the wetlands as possible, and we need that little bit of help here from the board. So we did a couple of things. Obviously, this speaks for itself, that the wetlands are constraining the parcel, and we need the relief, which is, which is sort of dictated by the wetland setbacks. But in addition to that, even if wetlands weren't an issue, we thought it would be helpful for you to do a character of the neighborhood analysis, which is part of the, part of the, part of the package to show you that 30-foot, 30-foot front yards are not a strange thing in this neighborhood. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots in the, just in this neighborhood where you have 30-foot front yards. Those are highlighted in yellow for you. We also have, as part of the package, I gave you a decision of the board back in 2003, where a little bit further up on Flying Point, before that famous almost 90-degree curve, just a little bit before you get to the curve, where the board granted a 30-foot setback for a property that, again, had wetlands on it. So I think it's sort of resus ibso locata, as the, us lawyers like to say, it speaks for itself. They're not substantial variances, particularly in relation to the neighborhood and the wetlands. This is the only place to put the property, so this is the only way to get the benefit that the applicants seek, which is a very reasonable benefit, the construction of a very small two-bedroom house on this 2.7 acre parcel. I just want to note, I started shaking my head when it came back that it was a three-story house, because I thought we were past that, when all you have down there is access and stuff like that. I thought the building department was typically saying, no, that's not three stories, but I do have, I do have a bunch of variances that were granted. I have to find them.
Well, the Town Code says it's not a story so long as it is comprised of an unfinished flood-resistant enclosure and is used solely for parking vehicles, incidental storage, and/or is the minimum necessary for building it.
Access, yeah.
So I mean, is there a space down there that is excessive, or?
Yeah, no, this is, this is what happens. It's, what do we have here? Lower level will contain unfinished storage space, a garage, access stairs to the first story of the residence. Isn't a habitable space down there? It's a unfinished storage space, a garage, access stairs, and I have one, I have multiple copies of various variances, but even before that.
Yeah, no, I mean, they regularly grant variances. I just was wondering what triggers it, you know?
Right, right.
I wonder if it has to do with the New York State Building Code. I know just recently we had this discussion, well, I heard a discussion about it. I don't know much about it, but assuming the New York State Building Code, the amount of the floor that's out of the ground, and that's when they consider it to be a story, but that may be, I'm not 100% sure, but that could be.
I know, a type 5 construction would fit, I'm sorry, Candace.
Listen, I'm done.
Type 5 construction would frame, you know, it's only, it's got to be, it has to be habitable. There's nothing habitable down there. So the board has granted this, do I, yeah, I think, yeah, I gave you a bunch of copies of multiple variances. The board has granted it before, either by interpretation or variance, I don't care. it before, either by interpretation or variance, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, and if we can get something from the building department, you know, stating that you don't need relief for the three stories.
They took their position already, that's why I'm here for the variance.
Yeah, they took, I mean, that's why I was just asking if there was something, you know, I mean, I don't know.
I was sort of scratching my head when I saw it.
Yeah, but I mean, it's two stories of habitable living space, the first story is not, correct?
No, it's not. I mean, for a while, the town was making us get variances from that, but, and I, and they were routinely granted because they're not, it's not truly a story, you know?
I mean, I think for your purposes, it's worth granting the variances and just saying, what we always used to say, no habitable space there, I mean.
Yeah.
I would prefer that as opposed to.
Otherwise, you gotta kick it back to the building department and it's just gonna take longer to get an additional.
Are they gonna require sprinklers because it's?
No, they shouldn't, because it's not, they require sprinklers in a type 5, three-story house when you have three habitable spaces.
Actual stories, yeah.
What do you got?
I was gonna say, I'm not sure if you want anything clarification, because I'm looking at a memo for the last, one of the other applications I was speaking about earlier.
Right.
And it talks about the 2020 New York State Residential Code, and talks about the definition of story above grade plane, and I'm thinking maybe that's what they were applying, but like I said, I'm not, I'm not sure. Only because, because it came from a recent application you're gonna see in a memo.
Well, I would.
But you know, I can't, I can't have habitable space below the base flood plane elevation plus two. I can't. It's prohibited under FEMA, so the only thing I can have is access to uninhabitable spaces or storage, stuff like that.
And from my perspective, as long as it's only two stories of habitable living space.
So, I'm sorry, Katie, clarification, so you would say that the zoning board would approve the three stories with the condition that the first story is uninhabitable?
The condition that we used to have, which is.
Yeah.
But you would stipulate it would be a three-story?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Okay.
Until we do another, I mean, if we have to do another code amendment, the whole point of, the whole point of the town code amendment that John is talking about was to stop sending people here for these three stories.
Yeah, that's what I'm scratching my head, trying to figure out what I'm doing here.
He thinks he complies with that, but to the extent the building department says he does.
Has already said that, so then our variance would be for the three stories that come uninhabitable.
I know, I gotta be careful.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So, I guess granted if necessary, or, you know, it'd be probably easier if you could grant it.
I would think so.
Again, you have a long calendar. I think this is really a speaks-for-itself thing, tiny house, two bedrooms, pushed up by the wetlands, DEC, interestingly enough, it took me longer to get the DEC permit, even though there had been a prior DEC permit for a much larger house. Usually, it's the town, but it took me a long time to get the DEC.
It's about Marjorie's comments. Did we go over Marjorie's?
Yes, why don't we do that? You wanna read them, Keith?
All right. Marj says, plans shall be revised to show height of building taken from base flood elevation plus two, and two, surveys shall be revised to read proposed three-story dwelling. Take care of that, John.
Well, I've got, I've got a Pyramid sketch right here where Bob Smith shows that the top of the sunscreen panel is 42 feet above, and I say it, I know I'm not technically saying it the right way, I say it's sea level. I always get corrected, because I guess it's a datum point, but the house complies.
Go see Marjorie, make sure it's cool with her.
Make sure it's okay with her, because we don't want her to.
I'm not asking for any height relief. There's no Pyramid relief.
Yeah, I see, I know that. I'm just saying what she said.
Okay. What do you want me to do? I'll do it.
What do you want me to do?
When did she sign it?
She signed it July 6th.
Huh?
July 6th.
Okay, I think that survey might have came in just after that.
Okay, so maybe, maybe that, the issue's been resolved.
Perhaps you think that she saw him, I think it was done before, that revise survey was.
Oh, okay.
It was.
Okay. But Bobby Smith shows it right here. It's height compliant and Pyramid compliant.
July 6th, the date of the letter with John's additional submission was June 27th. That doesn't mean that she saw it before.
Not just in the survey today, I think it was like, I think we received it like the 7th or something, it was like a day or two after.
Tell me what you wanna do, I'll do it.
Yeah.
Just make sure she's satisfied with the survey. Okay. Can you, okay. Are you directing me to?
Just make sure she has the new survey.
Okay.
Just asking you to speak with her. And if it turns out that she wants you to revise anything, then you just submit it, get it to a written submission.
Anyway.
Okay. So, can you?
Yep.
Anybody from the public?
I gotta ask, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Do you have, do you have another question, John? Anyone that's, tell us anything else?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, is there anyone from the public here who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Flying Point 1080 Real Estate LLC? This is for property located at 1080 Flying Point Road Watermill. That is, anyone who's here in the room, is there anyone who would like to be heard in connection with this application? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Flying Point 1080 Real Estate LLC for property located at 1080 Flying Point Road and Watermill? If you are waiting to be heard on Zoom, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. If not, Bob, it's yours.
Motion to close, second.
Okay, motion to close, then we're gonna have written subs.
Mission by 819 with a decision on 91.
Yep. Okay. All right, thank you, John. Mr. Macedonio.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Tudhill.
Hi.
Chair of the side, thanks so much, John, have a good rest of your night.
As always, I thank the board member Tuttle for his prompting.
Sometimes people have to be prompted, John, you know that. Item five on the agenda is Grace Amos Clark, 36 East Beach Drive in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-42-1-26.1. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for proposed two-story dwelling, 330-84D Pyramid Height for Pyramid Encroachment in the amount of 3,341 cubic feet, 1,812 cubic feet on the north side and 1,529 cubic feet on the south side. Two, 330-115 Continuance for required minimum side yard setback of 10.7 feet where a minimum of 15 feet is required on the north side of the property, and a total required side yard setback of 25, 21 feet, excuse me, where 35 feet is required. And three, 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and 330-83C Yards to allow the proposed decks to be located within the total required side yard for the principal dwelling. A setback of 10.9 feet for the deck on the north side of the property, and a setback, setback of 10.2 feet for the deck with lift on the south side of the property. Two, for an existing freestanding outdoor shower, 330-11 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a side yard setback of .25 feet where 10 feet is required, and 330-76D and 330-83C to allow the outdoor shower to be located within the total required side yard for the principal building. And three, 330-77G for mechanical equipment to be located on the south property line where a minimum of 10 feet is required in a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening, just have to swear you in unless either of you is an attorney. You're gonna state here names and addresses, please.
Hi, Grace A. Amos Clark, 36 East Beach Drive, Southampton, New York.
Okay.
William Clark, 36 East Beach Drive, Southampton, New York.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, then tell us about the application.
I'll start out with the existing shower, that's from 19, I don't know, 48. It was my grandfather's house, then my dad's, now mine. I wanted to keep it, but if it's gonna be an issue because it's freestanding.
It's close to the property.
Oh, yeah.
Where is it?
It's here.
It's right on the property.
It's right on the property.
Right, and always has been.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
My dad actually developed the whole block.
Okay.
So.
No issue with moving it?
Okay.
Right. So, we can take that part out.
It's just been on the survey. It wasn't moved because we wanted it, but no issue with the guys at all.
And as far as the shed in the backyard, it's one of those, I'm gonna say Rubbermaid, it's not Rubbermaid, but it's plastic, put-together sheds.
Snapped together.
We need it for bicycles and whatnot. It doesn't have to stay there. If there's somewhere else that we are allowed to put it, we would like to keep it. If we have to get rid of it, obviously, we'll get rid of it.
But it can easily be moved?
Taken apart, yeah.
I think the main issue is like the pyramid here, because we're both sandy now.
Yeah.
Like you said about the old.
It survived sandy, the bay actually met the channel, the house was swimming, we lost a lot. Sorry. It's my dad's house, so it's not really I wanna do it, kinda have to do it. What else? So, that's where the height comes in. The lift on the side, we have a sick child that will need the lift to get into the house. Right now, we have a ramp going up the whole side of the house, and, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make you talk.
I need it too.
I know, he's disabled himself, but it's mainly for my son.
I'm walking.
It is handicap entrance up the ramp and into the sliding door. Right now, the bathroom is not handicapped, the kitchen is not handicapped, the bedroom downstairs, neither are handicapped. So, that is our main thing for redoing everything to make the first floor handicap accessible. That's the reason for the lift. That's on the side of the house, you know, kinda hidden not to bother anybody. What else?
When the septic guy, engineer, set up this new septic system, the Fuji system for the clean stuff, he put the power unit right on the property line also. Also, not an issue.
It's just a little.
To get it off the property.
Yep, yep.
It's gotta be.
They sometimes make noise.
I understand, air conditioning units and such.
If that has to be moved, that's not an issue either. It's a small little box.
Yeah, yeah.
So, really, the only thing we're asking for, I think, is the height.
Is the pyramid. And for the, for people on the board who are, a couple of people who are newer, we've had a lot of, a lot of applications on East Beach Drive.
Yes.
And many applications for Pyramid relief.
Yes.
It is one of the nicest streets in the town, but it's got some challenges, because basically, a lot of these houses went up as, you know, summer cottages.
Two-by-threes.
On these little tiny, tiny.
Two-story.
Lots, narrow, narrow lots.
My dad is the one that built, had all of them built, every one of them.
I was there.
Every one of them, big Amos, yes.
So, when people wanna do something with the property, renovate, put a second story on, it ends up, we've granted some significant Pyramid relief from time to time in other applications. The amount that we're looking, looking at here, 3341 cubic feet total, if my, if I can, if I'm reading it correctly, my vision's not so good, so, anyway, 3341 cubic feet, which is more than what we typically often grant is in the range of about 2,500 cubic feet, but we certainly have granted this amount and we've granted more. So, my guess is the board will wanna know ceiling heights and the, you know, why we need the amount of Pyramid relief that you're proposing.
The mechanical, there's gonna be two air handles. One's gonna be in the attic for the upstairs, and one's gonna be mounted underneath the house. And the architect said, well, that has to be above a certain amount to be out of flood plain or the flood zone if water was to rise again. This so-called 100-year storm that comes every three or four years.
Apparently, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and this property, and these properties have water on both sides.
Yes.
So, it's especially vulnerable.
The house was swimming, sandy.
Spotted around, I'm sorry, we have spotted around the property these little Rubbermaid Costco board sheds for storage of cushions, toys for the kids and stuff, and such like that. And to get rid of all that stuff, we're gonna, underneath the house will be the summer storage for the toys and stuff.
What are your, what are your ceiling heights on the first floor and the second floor?
I think they're 8 feet. I think they're seven and a half or eight, honestly.
I think on this plan, eight and eight.
Now, there's a house right next door to us that did it two or three years ago. We weren't thrilled with it, but we understand because it's sandy, the same.
Your neighbor is kind of what you wanna do.
Yes.
Exactly.
And I know you guys don't like us saying, well, they did it, so you, but other people before us.
Well, and in a place like this, a place so vulnerable, the character of the community's actually gonna be changing as people renovate their houses.
It has.
Because you gotta, you gotta elevate them.
And I feel bad, because some of the older residents are like, oh, you're doing it too?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Half the block is already raised.
Right, right, because you have to. Yeah, I mean, in order to save, you know, have a property that's safe from a major flooding event, that's what you have to do.
My goal is to leave them for my children, which we have four.
Right, right.
How tall is the building, the total height?
Total height, in footage, I don't know, it's just two stories, and the first floor is three feet off ground level.
You're saying existing? You're asking existing?
Proposed.
Proposed. It should be on the bill. That's your.
I don't see it on here.
I see 8 feet and 8 feet, but I don't see the total height.
I have something here that says outside of pyramid, 1529, outside of pyramid.
Okay, that's not what I was trying to.
What are you, what are you looking for, Susan?
The total height.
Oh.
It looks like it's 16 feet. All right, I just was interested.
But all the heating, air conditioning, everything is gonna be attached to, I don't know if this is correct, but the subfloor, the underneath the house, that's why it needs to be that high.
Our architect is Steve Rosetti, I don't know if that name sounds familiar. He showed me his mechanics under his house, and he's inland, he's not even near water. All this stuff is supported underneath the roof.
I mean, it could be a written submission, you could, you could have, you know, if you want that information.
I didn't see it on the plan, so I just was interested. And we have to wait for, I don't know where you guys are with the Conservation Board?
We should be almost done.
Is it there?
There's a little bit with the septic, they wanted, I think, the water line changed to the other side of the house, but nothing house-wise yet.
You had a hearing, or is it an administrative wetlands permit? Because this board can't act until you have something from the Conservation Board?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, it should be almost finished, I think, in two weeks. It's all about the septic, though.
It's on the last page, it's 29 feet tall, total height.
Yeah, yeah.
So, are you saying that you're willing to take out of seeking variance relief for the shower?
Correct.
Okay, mechanicals on the, on the property, close to the property line.
And they're gonna move the shed to a conforming location.
Shed to conform, so really, the only relief you're looking for right now is the Pyramid relief?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we did have the other comment from the building department, it's from Marjorie Riley. She mentioned about the shed, that that could be located to a conforming location, but she also mentioned survey shall be revised to include the second-story deck under the total lot coverage calculation. I don't know if.
I believe Rosetti did read that.
Okay, it may have been taken care of already, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
The second story?
Yeah, include the second-story deck. I'll read it. Survey shall be revised to include the second-story deck under the total lot coverage calculation.
Even though it's over the existing deck already?
I don't know if you guys.
Apparently, that's what she wants.
His, what we're proposing, and this is the deck from side to side.
We wanna make sure that the calculations are accurate, and that's what she wants. So, we would need the survey revised to reflect that, that information. If you have any questions about it, you can either talk to Candace or talk to Marjorie.
No, that's fine, we could revise that. A couple of things had been revised, but we were waiting for the hearing to take off the shower and everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know the DEC had requested all pressure-treated wood, which, I don't know the initials for it, that's all removed already, so my page two is different than what you already have.
Okay, okay.
Treat, I was gonna say C, instead of ACQ.
Okay.
Okay.
We understand that the shower is kind of a nostalgic thing of yours, but we can't approve a shower.
No, I understand.
The shower was a pallet that floated up, I believe, to my grandfather, and he just left it there and piped in something.
The 38 hurricane.
There you go, there you go.
Would, am I allowed to ask a question? Would it be okay if we made a new shower, like underneath one of the upper walkways that are attached to the walkway?
If it's a conforming location, it's fine.
Yes.
Or from property line.
Absolutely, put it in a conforming location.
Okay, so.
But they should have that on this plan?
Yeah, we will, we'll add that on.
The new survey.
Yeah, yeah.
So removing the shower, putting any sheds in conforming locations?
All the sheds will be removed, the big one that's in the back, I call it back street side. If we can relocate it to a conforming place, we would like to, if we can't, we'll take it down.
Okay, and the mechanical will also be.
That's a little box, yeah.
Yeah, put it in a conforming location. And all this has to be on the survey.
Okay.
So it would need to be revised.
Plus having the, what Marjorie is asking for, right, the, Marjorie is asking for is the.
The total lot coverage calculation.
You can see.
Yeah, including the second-story deck, that's the other comment. Okay, yes.
Yeah, question on the second-story deck, what do you look for, square footage of coverage of the second story?
I think so, I think it just needs to be added to the total lot coverage calculation.
Is it the, is it the street small deck?
No.
Or is it the front deck over the existing deck?
Grace has the notes that Marjorie.
All right, we'll figure that out and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, okay.
But before you do anything to the survey, you should definitely touch base with the conservation board and make sure that you're on your way to approval.
Yeah, and they should probably have the most recent survey to approve. Okay, any other questions from members of the board? It does not appear that there's anyone from the public, unless it's Anna, you're here on it. For the application of Clark, this is for property located at thirty-six East Beach Drive in Neowak. Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Clark for thirty-six East Beach Drive in Neowak? If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Is there no one on Zoom?
No one on Zoom, okay, thank you, okay. Not Mike, it is yours.
So this is not a two-week written submission thing, so how long are you going to need to resolve these issues, get your, you know, because everybody's.
Conservation.
You need your conservation.
At least a resolution.
We have an expediter working on the DEC because it's hard to deal with the water.
Conservation.
Conservation. And they had no problem with the house as of yet. It was all septic, change this, change that, do this, do that. And it just went in two weeks ago for the last revised survey and everything else, so.
So why don't, how about give yourself a month to get.
The DEC also.
All your ducks in a row, Katie, does that make sense?
Sure, so you could, you know, put it down for a decision on the fifth, what is that, the fifteenth?
The fifteenth of September, and their written subs.
So.
What's the first meeting in September?
Nine to.
So nine to, so by September second, we're going to ask you to have all your ducks in a row.
Everything amended.
Yeah, everything amended.
Written submissions.
And then on the fifteenth, we will deliver a decision on it.
Which is based on having everything we need from the conservation board.
As long as that's it, yeah.
Turns out that they delay things, then.
Right, I understand.
We have to wait until they act.
I understand. Question, should I or can I apply to the building yet?
No.
No, I didn't think so, okay.
Not until you have this approval.
Okay, that's right.
It takes time, sorry.
Yeah, and in this situation, you need both conservation board and house.
Shall we come here again for another one of these?
No, no, just when, when, when everything is finalized and you have the approvals that you need at that point, then you would go to the billing department and start.
Beautiful place to live, but you have to jump through.
Found it very interesting.
I know.
People before us and even us. Is that emotion, Mike?
I'm sorry?
Is that emotion you mean?
Yes.
Well, I was really just kind of chatting. Are we closing this for, except for written submissions, is that what I'm saying?
Written submissions.
Okay, so we're closing the public hearing with the exception of looking for your written submissions by nine to, so we can have a decision on nine fifteen.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Okay. Everybody's enthusiastic.
Yeah, Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Todd, I guess I'll do Mr. Todd.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Wish you all the best with this project.
Down on the bottom there, that's where it says.
She got it, actually, Keith gave it to.
Yeah, 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 I have.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item six on the agenda is nine seventeen West Main LLC, one Windermere Court in Memsonburg slash Spianke, Suffolk County Taxman, nine hundred dash three fifty-three dash one dash twenty-four point seven. Applicant request for filing relief from Town Code three thirty dash thirty-eight, industrial districts table of dimensional regulations for a proposed commercial building, general slash special trade contractor. One, for the building, a principal rear yard setback of fifty-two point nine feet where sixty is required, and two, for the proposed outdoor storage, an accessory rear yard setback of fifty-two point five feet where sixty feet is required, and an accessory side yard setback of fifty-one point six feet where sixty feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
What has jurisdiction?
Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
He's up there.
Okay, oh, up there, yay, okay. All right, so unless you're an attorney, I just have to swear you in. If you can state your name and address, please.
Andrew Graham, sixty-nine Ridgeway Avenue, East Tocque, New York, Andrew Fleon.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name, please.
Sorry, Andrew Graham.
Okay, thank you.
Before I get into, talk about the relief for the application, I just had to talk about the building denial, because when I put in this application originally, it was my understanding that we were coming here because of section eighty-three J. You know, there should only be one lot line, the real lot line shall be opposite, shorter front lot line. And, you know, and it goes on, but so that we make technically opposite North Phillips the rear yard. And I believe that the denial is calling the opposite Windermere the rear yard and I just don't want to have no issue with that line as we go forward and have it come back.
Okay, well, the relief that's being requested that we have advertising the application is relief from three thirty eighty-three, industrial districts table of dimensional regulations for a proposed commercial building, general slash special trade contractor. For the building, a principal rear yard setback of fifty-two point nine feet where sixty feet is required, and for the proposed outdoor storage, an accessory rear yard setback of fifty-two point five feet where sixty feet is required, and accessory side yard setback of fifty-one point six feet where sixty feet is required.
Okay.
Is that what you understood it to be? Because I thought you said it's a different section of the code.
Yeah, well, you have thirty-eight, section thirty-eight is the dimensional regulations for the.
Because it's industrial districts table of dimensional regulations.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just citing eighty-three J because the denial refers to a lot line as the rear that I believe is the side, as eighty-three J reads.
What do you think is the rear, the rear line?
I believe the rear lot line is the lot line opposite North Phillips Avenue.
Oh, okay, not Windermere.
Not Windermere.
Okay, so Candace, you, this, this gentleman is bringing up a question about the section of the code for which relief is being requested on the, this is the application of nine seventeen West Main LLC. And so in the notice, it is relief from three thirty thirty-eight. And he mentioned a section of code eighty-three J?
Ultimately, we wouldn't need relief from thirty-eight, but it would be for separate setbacks and the lot lines would be referred to separately differently.
I'm not understanding what you mean, what do you mean, Andrew?
Andrew is suggesting that the rear, the rear lot line is not, is not, he's saying they're flipped. Andrew, you're saying the rear is what?
It's opposite Phillips. So it's this side.
So the one that we're calling the rear is what, a side, you think it's a side?
Correct, yeah, what the building denial is calling the rear is opposite Windermere and I believe that's the side.
All right, well, why don't you just start going through the application and I'll answer.
Okay, I'll present it as such because I think it would be the same case regardless. We're asking for the same.
Okay, no, but I appreciate you bringing it up because obviously, we want to be talking about the correct relief.
Yeah, I don't, and yeah, I don't want it to come back if I could.
Yep, okay.
So, you know, obviously, it's an irregularly shaped lot and it's, so unfortunate with the covenant buffer there, it really constraints the options for building here. Where we have the building cited now, it puts it as far away as possible from the residential properties, which are to the south down North Phillips, or the closest residential properties. And also allows us to meet the parking requirements with, you know, as part of the zoning code. It also, you know, brings it further away from North Phillips, reduces, you know, the visibility and any potential noise on North Phillips. Not the noise is much of a concern, but really visibility and it brings it more into the, into Windermere Court and the rest of the, you know, industrial area. The lot itself is actually one of the larger lots in the subdivision on Windermere Court. It's fifty thousand square feet or one point one seven acres. And the building that we're proposing is actually probably the smallest building in there. I believe the next, the next largest, the next smallest building is next door on Windermere Court. If you're looking at the survey, it's lot eight. And I believe they're about five hundred square foot larger than what we're proposing. And they're a much smaller lot, obviously, they have more favorable, a much more favorable lot, but it's, but what I'm getting at is we're looking to minimize the impact, you know, on the community, on the area, you know, general. So, and then since, since it wasn't referred to on the denial, but I want to bring up the twenty-foot setback off of the lot line opposite North Phillips. Because I believe that, you know, it's my understanding that there probably will be relief needed for it, even though it's not mentioned in here. But, but it's, if this were, you know, a side yard in LI forty, an individual side yard, it could have twenty. Since it's, you know, since it's not the side yard, it would be the rear, it would need to be sixty. But this conforms to the neighborhood, once again, on lot eight, that that building has, you know, very similar setback, I don't know if it's exactly twenty feet, but it's about twenty feet off the lot line opposite them. So it's, you know, it kind of conforms to the neighborhood better that way. And it allows, you know, for it to be cited as best as we could do on a property like this. And pretty much the same goes for outdoor storage, sixty foot is required and we're coming down to fifty-one point six and fifty-two point five. Really, there's no other good way to do outdoor storage, it doesn't put it out on the street, you know, for, close to the street, or impede the use of the building. So it kind of has to end up there. And it is, you know, a small, smaller space for outdoor storage, it's not an excessive area, so. That's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much, I don't open any questions.
Okay, so you think it may be possible that you're going to need additional relief? If you can follow up about that with the building department and with Candace?
Candace agrees with your, with the designation of the other two. Anthony?
Okay.
I'll make my comments.
Okay.
Can we look at this to planning board, actually?
Okay, feel free.
Yeah.
I'll come up here, actually, so I don't get yelled at by.
Sure. Hey, Andrew, how are you?
Good, yeah.
Good, so the planning board did a pre-application on this. So this was an industrial subdivision that was done somewhere in the late nineties, maybe, early two thousands, I'll say late nineties. It's not surprising that this was the last lot in the subdivision to get developed. It was not a greatly designed lot, only because I think that with some changes in subdivision design, we could have made a building envelope on this property. We acknowledged when we did the pre-submission conference report, so I'm going to refer that to you. Since this has been referred to planning, we've already made our comments. Planning board acknowledged the building envelope was severely limited on this property. And looking at it, I mean, I think I did a calculation that without any relief, you were looking at maybe a fifteen hundred square foot building, which doesn't, doesn't serve a good industrial use, to be quite honest. So the planning board acknowledged that the building envelope was limited, the buffers are substantial. But they sort of directed and said, if you need to design this properly and get relief, you know, we would be supportive of relief in this particular case. And I'll send the notes to you. But this was just a, not a great lot. And the reality from the planning board's perspective when we reviewed it is that we don't have a lot of industrial land for these uses. So this may be an instance where some relief to get a reasonable-sized building on there for special trade contractors, that's who's jamming up the roads in the morning, so.
Yeah, would be appropriate.
Yeah, so just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
The planning board's opinion on that.
Okay, very good.
So when we, we made the referral, so when do you think we will get, when do you think it's on your agenda next?
It won't have to be, actually.
Oh, you'll just refer, you'll just.
Yeah, because what we've been doing with the pre-submission conferences, if we're acknowledging that it requires relief, we're just saying from the get-go, this is going to be our comment, so I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
And I spoke to, I don't know if it was Dennis at the time, you and I had this discussion, Andrew. I believe that Candace is accurate about the setback, so we'll get that squared away.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so that's, all right, so then you're going to, just clarify for me, what's next step? Candace, you're going to clarify what the setbacks are and what the provisions are that we're looking at?
They're just, they're going to be, it's their side yard setbacks instead of rear. And then the last one, Andrew, that you said we didn't write up was something for twenty, is that what you said for the rear?
Yeah, opposite North Phillips, you have a twenty-foot.
Twenty-foot rear.
Which would be, which would, sixty's required, so that would also require.
And that could be under any other relief necessary, so we don't.
Okay.
I don't think we need to re-advertise it unless someone thinks we should.
No, it's right on the survey.
It's right on everything, yeah, okay, okay. Andrew, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to see, we covered, oh, so we did get comments from Marjorie. Site plan shall be revised to correctly indicate the total number of parking stalls provided as twenty-three stalls in parentheses, not twenty-one.
Okay.
All right, so that would be done as well.
Yeah, and on this drawing, I'd only see seventeen currently, I don't know, where am I missing that?
Well, four of the stalls would be within the building itself.
Yeah, within the building.
Oh, here, like here.
Yep.
And then where are the additional two going to go?
I don't know if you counted the loading spaces or the handicap spaces, but those are the two, the two of the others.
Got it, ten spaces, two loading, seven spaces. And then four, and, okay, thank you, okay.
Ten to twelve, sixteen.
Any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public in the room who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of nine seventeen West Main LLC for property located at one Windermere Court in Spianke? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of nine seventeen West Main LLC for property located at one Windermere Court in Spianke? If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand. Okay, we have, we have someone waiting, okay.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, we just can't see you.
Okay, I have like bad connection, so I'll try to.
Okay, we can do it without seeing you. Okay, I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
Not an attorney.
Okay, if you can state your name and address.
Steve Jufrey, ninety-one North Phillips Avenue, Spianke, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you can tell us your comments.
So I guess, like, I tried to look up the site plan, I didn't see it. My concerns, I guess, were if the driveway was going to be on North Phillips. I was hoping it was going to be on Windermere, like every, all the other driveways. And also, I just wanted to bring up, I'm actually for the relief, I just wanted to sort of mention a concern that there is not enough parking at most of those commercial places. And even if you pull up like the latest Zoom, the GIS image, you can see that already, that whole street has cars parked down it. So my concern is that if there's not enough parking on the lot, that they're going to be, have to park on North Phillips, which is a busy road and it's going to sort of affect my access to my property, so that's kind of, you know, I'm not against, you guys are driving or anything like that. I can't see the plan, but I just kind of want to try to share my concerns, I guess.
Okay, well, just for what it's worth, they're not asking for relief for less parking spaces. So the parking spaces that there, that are, were discussed.
I think they're asking for more, that's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just want them on the survey.
Okay.
But they're not asking for relief for less parking spaces, so I understand your concern about the parking, but.
I'm saying I'm for it, I guess, and I hope they can have more parking spaces so that it doesn't create another problem.
so that it doesn't create another problem, I guess, that's.
You're trying to avoid North Phillips Avenue being used for parking?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And the driveway access is on Windermere?
And the driveway access, yes, the driveway access on Windermere, I'm good with that, too. Yeah, okay, I just, for some reason, I couldn't find the, I guess, the plan, so I just wanted to sort of make sure of that, that's all.
Yeah, okay, very good. Well, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
Is there anything that we can do to facilitate that, to make sure that there's no parking on North Phillips? I don't think so, right, that would be the.
It's it's all, they're complying with the current, with the current zone says, zoning says. So I can't see how we can put a limitation. Oh, oh, well, and like no parking on the street, well, that's, I think, well, that's the town, that's the town board.
That's the town.
They could put a no parking, but or a limited for two-hour.
They absolutely could do those things, so anybody can go and make that suggestion. Okay, all right, okay. So I don't think we have anybody else who's waiting. Andrew, is there anything else you wanted to tell us?
No, I think, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, very good. Okay, Susan?
How long is it going to take for all of these, you know, corrections and whatever?
To get the odds of the survey updated, hopefully it's pretty quick. It's just, you have to change the number. And as far as, I'm not so sure with building, it's going to be whatever building takes, you know, unfortunately. Not sure. I think it should be quick, it's just rewriting the denial.
All right, so we don't have to rewrite the denial.
Okay, so we can call for, we'll keep, we'll close the public hearing and we'll leave it open for written submissions for August 19th with a decision September 1st.
Second.
And would that survey be required on the 19th then?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, I'm just saying.
Okay. Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia?
Aye.
Mr. Tithill?
Aye.
Chavatai, thanks so much for being here, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the re-advertising application, 7 Ivan Pasca.
Good night, take care.
What happened?
Re-advertising?
Yes.
11 North Shore Road, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-125-118. Appropriate relief from the following provisions of the town code. 330-11, Residence District Stable Dimensional Regulations for a proposed third-story addition where maximum of two stories is permitted. 330-84D Pyramid Height for a proposed total encroachment of 2,463.21 cubic feet, 2,351 cubic feet on the west side of the property and 112.21 cubic feet on the east side, southeast side of the property. Three, 330-115 continuance for a second-story deck as the proposed front setback of 31.8 feet where 60 feet is required offshore road and two for a proposed first, second, and third-story addition. A principal minimum side yard setback of 17.4 feet where 20 feet is required and a total principal side yard setback of 38.9 feet where 60 feet is required and non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
Anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yep, looking for Linda Ruizie.
Is Linda Ruizie on Zoom, maybe? No one on Zoom? Okay, second call.
Okay. You want me to call right now?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
Can you hear me, I'm sorry?
Yes, we can. We don't see you, but we can hear you.
Yep. So, yeah, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Oh, it's this, my video, and it's on.
There we go, now it's on.
Sorry about that. How are you doing this evening?
Doing all right, unless you're an attorney, just have to swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
My name is Linda Ruizie from Definite Design. Office is located at 18 Hunter Avenue, Miller Place, New York, 1176 floor.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and ma'am, do you want to speak as well? If you can state your name and address. We can't, we can't hear you. We, we, we can't hear you there.
Dennis Murray.
That's better.
N U R A Y. 136 Windermere Avenue, Mastick, New York, 11950.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, if you can tell us about the application.
Yes.
Linda, we can't hear you now.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
Now we can, now we can.
Okay.
Now, now we can't hear you again.
I'm not sure why. It just keeps going in and out.
And now, and now we can hear you. So I guess we're just going to have to see.
Try to stay right where you're at with the.
Nope. Nope.
Where is Linda Ruizie from?
How about that?
Now we can hear you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so we are on our fourth zoning. We are here for the relief of the following. I think you need your face directly.
Yeah, it's going in and out, continues to go in and out.
Then we lose you. How's that?
That's fine, hopefully it will, it will stay.
Is it there?
Well, we can hear you now.
Okay.
But we'll see.
So we're on the existing deck approximately 65 square feet with the proposed 31.8 required at 60 on the front setback offshore road. We're also here for the pyramid encroachment on the west and southeast side of the property and as well as a first, second, and third story addition, including a two-car garage with the living space and secondary staircase leading to the existing roof deck and door where principal side yard is 17.4 where required 20 and a total of 38.9 where 60 is required. After speaking with the design consultant that's here, we were thinking that the, instead of for the third story, I know that that's a requirement for relief that isn't really infavorable, I'm sure. We were thinking of changing the height of the ceiling to the roof, which leaving the front at an 18-foot and the rear of that ceiling to a 13-foot ceiling height instead of having the observation loft, still having just the secondary staircase leading to the existing roof deck and door.
And you think that would make it make it second story? That would eliminate?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Does it reduce the pyramid?
Does, no, I don't believe it's not reducing the pyramid.
But you're going to have a 13-foot ceiling?
Well, the, the, the two, the ceiling that's towards shore road would be an 18-foot. So the whole, the ceiling on the second floor would be 18 on the front side and like 13 on the, the rear side of the ceiling, having it completely open instead of having a third floor put there and having an observation loft.
But you could also reduce the size of that ceiling to reduce the amount of pyramid relief.
Right.
He said that, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure, I said that another alternative would be for you to reduce the ceiling height so that the pyramid relief is reduced. I mean, a 13 or 14-foot high ceiling is a very high ceiling.
18 at one point.
18 at one point, yeah.
Correct, 18 at one point.
Yeah, it's very, very high ceilings.
Cathedral, cathedral ceilings can be that high, of course.
They can, but you need pyramid relief for it.
It is a commercial?
What?
Is this a commercial or is this a residential?
No, it's a residential. But we would need the, the height of the ceiling for, in the front at least, for the accessibility of the secondary spiral staircase leading to the existing roof deck and door. That's what she's, that she's stating.
Do we have, do we have anything that shows the pyramid relief being requested? I just have a survey. Does anybody have a? But they haven't been distributed to us.
Well, usually the lead gets, you know, we don't, you might have smaller copies, but usually the lead gets the full-blown building plans.
You want these plans, you want to take a look at these plans?
Oh, I just would have liked to have seen them in advance, but, okay.
Well, there they are.
There they are.
Okay.
I'm having trouble with visualizing this.
Whoops.
Sorry.
Yep, yeah, I mean, the flip side of this is that the amount of pyramid relief that you're requesting
Not much.
is not that much, it's in the range of 2,500, that is a little less than 2,500 cubic feet. On the other hand, Susan, you have to watch out for the microphone. It's right there.
Is this the one I'm?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you, are you suggesting you'd like to modify your application at this point?
I feel that if we could modify it, that it's now not considered a third story. I think that it would be favorable to the board for us doing that. I just figured that while I was speaking with the design consultant going back and forth, what my option is, what can we do to make the board happy and favorable to my request? And that being, you know, changing it from an observation loft to being cathedral ceilings and just having the accessibility for the secondary staircase leading to the existing roof deck and door. That's really, we're not looking to have a third floor as far as, you know, to do anything with it other than the staircase. So if we could make it a cathedral ceiling and it's able to be done on the architect's and the designer's end and the board is capable of doing that, I, you know, I don't have a problem addressing it that way if that's, that's, you know, okay with me.
Yeah. Looking at the aerial, the house, well, you know, the aerial is different than the, than the survey. On the survey, the house, no, the house is, I guess, further north. I don't know, is it north or south? Anyway, the house is, the existing house does not appear to be quite centered on the property.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think.
And it's quite high in elevation on one side.
Okay, yeah, because I'm thinking some of the need for the pyramid relief is because the house is not centered. But the house is where it is, you're not, you're doing an addition to the house. Do you know if currently what's there complies with pyramid?
As far as I am aware, let me just check that. Without the additions, I think we are in compliance.
Okay, so it's the pyramid, it's the pyramid's pretty much coming from the addition.
In compliance.
Okay.
For the pyramid.
These.
Just looking at the.
Plans don't jive with what she's proposing at all. They have, they have a habitable first floor on these plans.
Or basement.
A basement.
So is it compliant with them?
Okay.
So.
And is it in compliance?
Three stories.
These plans are for a three-story?
This is for a three-story house, doesn't even relate to the cathedral ceiling or whatever she's talking about.
She has to.
She has to. Yeah, we don't, I understand, but, but I'm just asking, does she want to modify the, you know, whatever?
Okay, all right, so, can you, can you, you want to say there, I will. So, so, so looking at the plans, it appears that we have habitable living space in the basement, first floor and second floor. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's bedrooms in the basement?
As far as I am aware of, yes. And as far as I'm aware, the previous expediter was and had the basement inspected by the town Southampton Building Department and they were waiting on variance from state due to height of the ceiling in the basement. As far as I know, as yet it wasn't, it wasn't my company that was handling that. But I will be more than happy to see if I have to address it, if it was overlooked.
Yeah, I mean, because you, you, initially, you know, you were talking about, you know, getting rid of the three stories by getting rid of, I guess, a spiral staircase, I think, or changing that.
Changing the observation loft.
Yeah, yeah, so our, so our question is, does that even make a difference? It may still be considered three stories because the basement is habitable living space, I don't know. But that would be a question I would.
Well, it's not, the basement won't be considered habitable living space if they need a variance from the height, the ceiling height. In order for the basement to be habitable living space, it has to have a certain ceiling height.
Right.
So I don't think that's being factored into those plans.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And that's another issue for them.
Okay, but, but you, but you're, but you're trying to see if you can avoid a request for relief for a three-story structure, okay?
Well, third story, correct.
Correct, so however you want to do that, that's fine, but I would want to make sure that you can do that.
Well, but typically, but you are right, typically this board does not grant variances for third stories unless they're in flood zones like we heard today or unless, you know, somebody has bought a house and there's a small attic space that's been.
Or like pre-existing, you know, most of the time, we, you know, we generally don't want three stories for. And also, the other thing about three stories is when it's three stories, you know, an actual three stories, you have to have a sprinkler system put in.
Sprinklers, correct.
Yeah, which is a significant expense. Yep, we're losing you again.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if we, if we, if we modify the addition to have cathedral ceilings, then it's not considered a third story based upon it's continued with one room, such as the second-floor addition. And we're just have, trying to get a staircase, secondary, of course, like I said, to the roof deck, right now, the, the access to the roof deck is on an outside staircase. But once the addition, if the addition is approved, then that outside staircase now is not allowing the entrance to the roof.
Okay, and, and did you get verification of this from the building department, that this is the case?
That this is the case as far as this third story?
Making it a second story instead of three story?
Well, I did, I did speak with Sean McDermott and he did speak with Montrie Riley, who did do the write-up based upon the third story. And I said, well, we, it's really accessible for staircase. And he said, well, it still has to have variance and it's less than be approved by the board. And that's where we left it. If we have to get clear determination, it was, you know, I will be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just don't want us to, you know, grant relief for two-story dwelling, have you go to the building department and then have them say, no, you got to go back to ZBI. That's, that's, yeah, that's.
Sean McDermott did know that, you know, what, what the plans were because I did have a, I did speak with him over the phone and I did ask him to speak with Mrs. Riley, Montrie Riley, to go over what her determination was because when she said it was a third story, I said, it's not really because it's just for a staircase. And he said, well, however it would be, it would need to have a variance and granted by the board. And that's why it was written up by Montrie Riley the way it was.
Do you have access by external staircase, right?
We have, as of now, there is access to external. But once, and if the addition itself was to be granted, then there's no longer access to that, to that area.
But Marjorie, I mean, the way this was written up was for a three-story dwelling, relief for a three-story dwelling.
Right, because of the, I'm assuming because of the observation loft being overlooking the.
So Linda, I need you to get clarification of this with the building department, okay?
No problem.
That's all. We also had comments from the building department from, from Marjorie, and this is what we got. Survey prepared by Michael K. Wick stated, December 31st, 2021 shall be updated to indicate the proposed removal of the. indicate the proposed removal of the sheds on the required front facing Whopperwell Lane or relief shall be requested from the ZBA." Two, although not part of this application, any fence over four feet in height shall comply with 330-109A, fences, walls, accessory driveway structures, and clotheslines, or a variance shall be obtained. Three, in order to clarify the record, the existing swimming pools, pool was approved to be 32.1 feet from the required front of the property line, Whopperwell Lane, CC number A150570. In a front yard? Hmm. Five, an additional bedroom was constructed in the finished basement without the benefit of a building permit. This work shall be addressed with the building department.
Got to get some stuff clear here.
Yeah, I think there are some things to be worked out.
We also have multiple, we just received yesterday and today, multiple emails in opposition to the application. So you should probably, you know, next time you come to the building department, take a look at those.
Okay.
And as Mr. Grossman said, you would need less than pyramid encroachment if you made a change in that height of that cathedral ceiling. I mean, if you had, you said it was 18 feet, is that right?
And part of, the part of the ceiling to make, you know, one part of the ceiling would be 18 foot, the back part of the ceiling would be, because it's splendid, would be 13 feet.
Well, that's still what I consider too high. So I would like to see, I would like to see an adjustment in that ceiling. And I certainly feel that this case needs to be adjourned. There's so many issues.
Yeah.
That's, without being clarified just by submittals.
Yeah. And Helen, I'm with you on the ceiling, on the ceiling height. I think it's just, it's too high.
I agree.
I like to see where the pyramid relief is.
This whole concept of, yeah, it's confusing. Roof deck as opposed to a third story. I mean, I do need a lot of, more clarification.
It's not ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anybody here?
Yes, yes. So, okay. So I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public, and then we'll, and then we're going to go from there. So is there anyone here in the room who is waiting, waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Pasco for a property located at 11 North Shore Road in Hampton Bays? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Pasco for property at 11 North Shore Road, Hampton Bays? If you're waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Yes, your number.
Okay. Whoever would like to go first, we're ready.
Is there somebody there?
Yeah.
Say there was somebody there?
Well, there's going to be.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, we just can't see you.
Can't see you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Unless you're an attorney, I just have to swear you in.
Oh, sorry, start my video, one second here.
Okay.
There I am.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, if you can state your name and address.
Charles Levine, 9 North Shore Road, Hampton Bays, New York, 11946.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And Charles, are you an adjacent property owner?
Yes, I am, I live right next door.
Okay. And if you can give us your comments.
Well, you know, just basically, I'm really just confused as you are. You know, I speak to Ivan and Tanya, the owners, and they told me they're building a garage, and then we get notice, you know, this past week by walk, they follow the rules of this three-story garage, which, you know, I think has, in addition to two cars, has a living space as well, which is not clear on his application. And then the representative shows up here and wants to change everything. And I'm just amazed and shocked by this process. Man, how do they expect us to react to what they're doing if there's no visibility as to what they're doing?
Well, we're going to get it all cleared up. I'll tell you that, I'll tell you that much.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you very much.
We're going to hold it over.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you then.
Okay. No problem. Appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who's waiting to be heard?
No one else on Zoom.
No one else on Zoom?
All right, seeing you here, no one. I'm going to hold this open for all purposes. When's the second meeting in September?
September 15.
9:15.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Jevon Ty, we'll see you on September 15th, and if you can work on all these issues, we greatly appreciate it.
I will. Thank you so much for your time.
No problem. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Ida May, here's 110 Gaya LLC, 110 Gaya Road in Bridgeham, Suffolk County, tax map 900, dash 49, dash one, dash 3.3. This is...
Hold over.
Hold over.
It's a holdover?
Yes.
All right. So I'm done talking.
You don't have to read.
I'm done talking. I'm done talking. Feel like I'm in the giant game.
You're not going to talk anymore?
It's a holdover, but I don't think we ever had testimony.
We haven't had a hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
No hearing.
Thanks. Yeah.
Two preliminary issues. One, I'm handing forward a survey that shows a reduction in the size of the court, 55 to 110.
I'm going to learn my lesson.
This time.
Okay, no problem. State that on the record, okay?
Yeah. Michael Daly, I will recuse myself from this, from this here.
Okay. Well, one down.
Is that my four?
Yeah, five. Five.
So, so...
I'm sorry, before you start, Adam, with the new adjournment application, you just have to state his name for the record.
Of course.
If you haven't heard of that.
Yep.
For the applicant, 110 Gaya Road LLC, David Gil Martin, Greenberg, Troy, Bridgehampton, New York, and I have with me the two principals of 110 Gaya, Michael and Jasmine Barr, and I'd ask you to swear them in.
Sure. Are you going to just both raise your right hand and state your name?
I'm not a lawyer.
You're not a lawyer? Okay. You, okay, if you're a lawyer, then you don't have to be sworn in.
I am Michael.
I wasn't going to tell them.
Really? Okay. You can state your name and address.
Michael Barr, 110 Gaya Road.
Okay. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do indeed.
So we lawyers don't have to be sworn in, because we automatically tell the truth.
Always, always is. Crazy, crazy. Well, lawyers make the rules, so.
So, so again, we've reduced the size of the court to 55 by 110, and as the chairman always admonishes me, that we should speak to the neighbors in advance before we came in. It is the reason why there were two adjournments on this case. We've gone back and forth with the neighbor who's directly to the south, and if there's a detriment, he would be the one most impacted by it. I don't think there is, but long discussions and negotiations with him, and Michael is the one who primarily did that. I have gone back and forth with Eddie Burke Jr., can confirm what Michael's going to say, but he's the one that negotiated with the neighbor. And there's a couple of offers in this, so it's important.
Okay.
Okay.
In brief, we took the time, sorry for the adjournment, but we understood it was the right process, got in touch with our neighbor, had a number of conversations and communications, and he is now in support. He asked us to sink it. He asked us to do the right thing and landscape it properly, which we will do, and now we have his support.
Okay, good, good. So it's being sunk and screening?
Screened, correct. And that can be a condition to any decision.
Okay.
Assuming it's positive.
How sunk?
Say it again.
How sunk?
Four?
Four, I think four. We didn't, we didn't specify.
You didn't specify.
We didn't specify.
Okay.
Generally, four usually, right?
Yes. Four is the normal. So here's a survey, and this is what we're looking at doing, is moving the court up from here, where it would be permitted, forward, where it needs a front yard setback for an accessory structure from 90 to 45, and a side yard setback to 22.5. As this board knows, that's 75% on the side yard, which would qualify for a minor variance if we weren't looking for the front yard variance. The benefits here, and actually, I'll let Michael and Jasmine speak to that, are pretty clear and I think pretty compelling. And you're going to hear something as a, as a reason and a benefit that I've never heard before, all the time doing this.
We have, we have three daughters, 13, 11, and 9, who play a lot in the backyard, and part of it is to preserve that open space, but then to play soccer and volleyball and be active. They are all also tennis players. And then there's some other interesting aspects. One, we were going to talk about it, the side setback helps us avoid some septic confusion with the court.
Okay.
We back up to the Southampton Polo Field, and our backyard is the goal, and we get polo balls in our backyard constantly, and to the point where, you know, there are days that we don't let the kids...
Wow.
You know, they can play kind of in the front and on the side, but they can't go out in the back when they're, they're playing, because these heavy balls come flying into our yard. So it's, it'd be safer for them to be closer to the front. You know, we have three kids, three scholar athletes, they're committed to academics and their sports, and tennis is a big part of their life, which is why we've been wanting to have the court at our house. And it would, it would be a huge benefit to their tennis and their, keeping them, keeping them almost straight and narrow and off the phones and outside playing and...
Off the iPad?
Exactly.
Off the screen.
And if you have any experience with teenage girls these days, you'll understand what I mean. So this is just, you know, important for, for them to get outside and get active and have a place space and grass, and we love this house, we love this community, this is home to us, and we want to be good neighbors, and we want to have our kids, you know, athletic and outside and active, and this would help us do it.
Okay. The rail and wire fence that's shown on the survey, I'm looking where the tennis court is? The polo balls will go over it or through it, or is it going, coming from another?
It's a...
Over.
It goes over it.
But this is the area you have the kids playing in, this backyard.
Yes.
With the soccer and the polo balls are coming in.
Right. We don't let them, we don't let them play.
They don't play in the back, they don't go in the pool when they're playing. We're not complaining about the polo.
No, no.
It's lovely.
It's beautiful to watch.
I'm only asking, because you're talking about your daughters and, you know, metal objects, but what would be, balls being, I would be concerned about that.
No, we don't let them play back there when, when the polo players are playing.
The point is to be able to play tennis when they're playing polo to bring it forward out of, out of range. But they do play when they're not playing polo in that backfield.
So the proposed location of the tennis court, other than everything else, it doesn't sound to me like there is a conforming location on this, on this lot.
There is, if we shift it back, it's 30 feet off the back lot, and then, and then we could come 30 in. It would be, you know, right in the middle in the backyard next to the pool and taking away the open space where they play. I mean, there's some other, a couple of other benefits. One, there's an open vista now to see the ag reserve, which is, it's, it's an, I don't know if any of you have been there, but it's a very charming...
I've been there.
Quiet area.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, and it's, it was a surprise. I thought Gaya Road was that small road, and then it went back.
It's like a mystery.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that it was there. The other, the other, I guess, going to the detriment, but our benefit, I think really to the neighbors that are especially here, that's Danielle's Way, which is a part of the subdivisions. Now, they're not looking at a tennis court as they look over their ag reserves. So I think, you know, there's a, there's a benefit to everybody moving it up. So then we, we look at the detriment, and again, our neighbor immediately next door here seems to me that if there was a detriment, this would be the only person that would be affected by it, and, and he's the person who has signed off with the, with the sinking. The only other people that could possibly is across the street on Scuttle Hole Road, which is across here, where there's a drainage easement and then 100-foot setback, which is shown on subdivision, that's that subdivision, right? So you can see that you have a drainage easement and then 100-foot structure setback. That's exhibit number three, if you're looking at the... So I don't think that there's, there's no detriment to any of the people here, and I think it could be argued that there's a benefit to the neighborhood that we move it forward, so nobody has to look at it.
Right. On the other hand, sometimes we have applications where, you know, we're told there's a conforming location, but we want to have it somewhere else. And so sometimes we have members of the board saying, when people have a conforming location, we'd rather have them locate the structure at a, at a conforming location. I'm not speaking for anyone in the rest of the board, and I'm not saying I'm for, going in that direction myself, but I want to ask how you would respond to it.
I would respond to that, number one, is we're not looking to achieve anything that we're not otherwise entitled to, right? So if there is a conforming location, we can have a tennis court. We just think there's a better place for it. And I think the character of the neighborhood, and, and you look at the detriment, there's no detriment. So number one, we're not trying to achieve anything that we're not otherwise entitled to. Sometimes zoning puts you in a place that's not as beneficial for the property owner, and that's why you exist, to allow us the opportunity to demonstrate that it doesn't fit, or it doesn't work, or it doesn't work as well in the location that we're allowed to do it, so we're looking to put it in another place.
Yeah. And this other place where the variance is being requested, the neighbor is now satisfied?
Satisfied.
Right.
I don't have a problem with the polo balls going to the conforming location.
Yes, you put it right on, you know, 30 feet off of the, off of the polo field coming back.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm not okay, because it is, there is a conforming location, and, you know, having a tennis court in the front yard is troubling to me. I mean, I think that if you, perhaps you could move it back a little bit, I'd be more okay with it, but I've been there, I've seen the, it's just, it's in an awkward place. I mean, you know, the street is just sort of, doesn't fit, I don't know. And if you're, if you're going to be sinking it, I mean, you're going to still get vistas. I mean, if you sink it, you'll still get a vista, but I don't know. I, I'm not totally for this.
Yeah. Another thing, for what it's worth, I mean, debating it either, either way, is that a conforming court, you wouldn't have to sink it, you wouldn't have to screen it.
Do whatever.
But that impacts the vistas, then.
And it makes more noise. I mean, the fact that you're sinking...
And you have polo balls getting into your court.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the polos, twice a week, games, and then practices, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a fairly constant impact.
Yeah, the summer, it's true. The summer, it's true. And I appreciate the fact that you've gone to the neighbor and you've, because he's clearly or they clearly the most impacted by this. It's just, to me, it just seems awkward. I don't know. I just, I'm not crazy about the front yard.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's very close to the street. I, I don't know. The whole thing just doesn't seem right.
I appreciate.
It's 50% of the setback. I, you know, I understand the front.
No, I understand, but I'm, you know, it's not right on the property line, but it's still, it's, it's in, in my opinion, in an awkward place.
Yeah. And the other reason we sometimes grant relief for pools or tennis courts, other structures in, in front yards is because you have either two front, the property is burdened by two front yards, it's a flag lot where.
Wetlands or, you know, some other kind of complication.
Wetlands with lots of switch. So, I mean, there are circumstances where we, you know, grant relief for front yards. This would not be a typical one of them. But again, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it.
I'm not, and I'm not opposed to the side yard setback if your neighbor is agreeable to it. My problem is the front yard.
Can, can we talk about screening it so it's not seen? If you look at the aerial, there are only three other houses that, that would go past this and if it's screened, it will be invisible to them. If we move it back to a conforming location, it'll become visible to them. So I mean, I think, you know.
You know, it's a, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's nice and large, you know? I understand you, you know, look, I'd be arguing for everything I wanted to. I'm just telling you what my concerns are.
I appreciate that.
Is there anything that we could do in terms of landscaping, screening? I mean, we, this is our home. I'm going to die here. Like this is where we want to be.
Please don't say that.
No, I'm saying.
Not until soon.
Like this is, this place is so special to us and we are investing.
And I see why. It is a very pretty place, really.
So if there's, we're willing to make an investment in it. If there's anything we can do to satisfy your concerns.
Can we push it back a little bit?
The.
So instead of 45 feet, pushing it back a bit?
Then we go into the polo ball.
No, I don't think.
Oh, no.
They come.
The polo balls come all the way, they come into the pool area sometimes.
The girls don't go in the pool when they're playing.
No, I understand, but you're going to have a fence around, I mean, your property is next to a polo ground, you know?
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the, the problem with pushing it back is the, and we're blessed and it's a beautiful property and it's a big property.
It is.
And the, the way the house is built, we bought it through Mr. Daley. The angles are such that as you push it back, it is views, it is genuinely, if you're there, that are neighbors' views because everyone is there because of this reserve. And then it, it just chews into, I mean, all of our place space is, is right there. And it just, it just sort of chews it up. That, that's what we have struggled with, which is why we thought, given that this is a, you know, not a through street, dead end, you know, three other houses, you know, we thought that sinking it, screening it, landscaping it, you know, would, would, would do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Helen?
Yes?
Do you have any thoughts about this application?
I have mixed feelings about it right now. I'm not 100%. I understand what Susan is saying and she did visit the property, which is very important to me. I did not visit the property. So perhaps I should visit the property and we can adjourn this case one more time. I, you know, whatever. Let's find out what the rest of the board feels about this particular thing.
I'm okay with it.
I sell full sell.
And I'm not 100% sure. Although, although I'm leaning towards being okay with it, but I'm not 100% sure. Yeah. Yeah. And you guys need four, so, you know. Yeah. Okay.
I'm not above begging, so just in case that.
Is there, is it, I mean, is it, if it's 50 feet, I mean, if there's no magic.
If we go to 50 feet instead of 45 feet, is that more of a?
Well, it'd be nice to see some movement.
Oh.
We could, I mean, I'm, I have a mixed opinion also on this, so, you know, I think if we see some movement, 50, 55 feet, maybe we could, we could talk about it.
Susan, what, what number is the right number to make you feel comfortable with?
Don't put me on the spot.
Absolutely.
I have no idea, but I, the furthest back that you, I would, I would welcome your suggestion about how far back you could go and I would consider that.
Okay, David, what can you say?
50 feet. Can we move it back from 45 to 50 feet? That's less than 50%?
I'd be happier with 55.
Can we split it?
52 and a half.
I mean, I think it's important, I mean, we're here, right? I mean, we went through a process.
But 10 feet, 10 feet is like for me to you, so I'm, I'm saying.
I mean, that, that goes the other way too. It's, it is, I would think from the street, pretty indistinguishable when it's screened.
I think it, it would make me happier, but I'm one vote.
And we need your happiness.
I'm one vote, that's all.
55.
I, I think we have to.
Yeah, we.
I think that's it.
Again.
Appreciate it.
We're all blessed.
We really appreciate that.
Yes, yes. It's the, it's the angles and how it pinches the space. Yeah, and so we have to go.
Go back and take a look.
Stake it out. We've been, we do love this, we've been incredibly thoughtful.
Helen will go and visit, stake it out and see.
And we're going to stake out to see just how much, competing angles and how much it.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. All right, that's good.
Helen, are you okay with 50 feet?
Excuse me?
Are you okay with 50 feet if we move it back five feet?
What about the 55?
What's this?
Our, our offer was at 50, 55, we start to get into the.
52 and a half.
Okay. Can you do that, David?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right, 52 and a half.
52 and a half?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good?
Appreciate it, thank you.
52 and a half, we're all good?
We're all good.
52 and a half revised survey going once?
We're screened.
We're fully vested.
We're fully vested.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful spot and please enjoy it.
And we wish you all the best with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate the process.
Do you want to get the people?
Yes, yes. Yes, one of.
Maybe you can make the court bigger then.
Well, now you're talking.
Does not appear to be anyone in the audience that connects with the application of 110 Guyer LLC, but I do want to ask if there's anyone who's waiting to be heard on Zoom with connection with the application of 110 Guyer LLC. This is for 110 Guyer Road in Watermill. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Bob, all yours.
Okay, move to close the meeting. Do written submissions on the, on the survey?
Yes, I'll have that before the next meeting. I'll have it adjusted.
Written submission by 8:19, decision on 9:1.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a sec? You're welcome. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley have accused himself and chair votes aye. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you too.
No problem.
Good luck with everything.
We didn't read Marge's comments.
Oh, we didn't. Well, you'll take care of that, won't you?
Well, Marge's comments, and I don't want to, I don't want to irritate the chairman, but go back to the first hearing with Bruce Anderson.
That did irritate the chairman.
It did irritate the chairman, so I didn't want to bring it up till after. But, but the background history of this property explains what happened. She said that the shed is non-conforming, but we have a CO, it got the building permit, it went through the whole thing. So this idea that, that the side yard setback doesn't matter, it's the required yards, which are often larger for a principal structure, that's what's creating the tension and it's highlighted in, with this property. And I was ready when you asked, but, but that's what's going on. That's why everybody comes in.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I would just rather if, if, you know, someone has a, has an issue with the building department's, you know, your policies, that they address it to the building department and not ask us to take a position on it.
I did. I did. And I was told to adjust.
I did.
So I adjusted.
Yeah.
I adjusted.
Okay, thanks. You have on the public? I did. Yes, yes. We're good. Have a good night.
All right.
Yep.
Ready?
Michael can come back in.
Yep.
Be honest with you.
Yep.
Nine, Kim O'Leaster, 17, Allenson Lane, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-323-59. This is held over from many meetings.
Last one, April 7.
It's not my fault.
Okay, good evening.
Are you ready?
Yes. Last but not least.
I gotta wake back up.
All right, so on this one, we've had a previous public hearing.
Yes.
So can you give us an update?
I was here in February and went through the explanation of the variances that we're requesting. Do you want me to go through all that again or do you?
Just update the board on the SECR.
Okay. So since then, we went to the planning board and they did a SECR review and issued a negative declaration. So that's what's happened since then. The wetlands line was also updated slightly. I mean, it's basically the same, but shifted a foot here or there. So that's been updated as well.
Okay.
Did it impact any of your variances?
No. It does reduce the size of the area of the boat storage on the waterfront side by a few square feet.
But is the setback still 25?
Yes. It doesn't impact the setbacks to the property lines or the zoning districts, which we're asking for the variances for.
And does this board have like a revised survey or whatever?
I believe so. I have, I have copies, but the most recent is July 27.
Yeah, we don't have that.
I'm sorry. April. I mean, restart. May, I was looking the wrong year. I was looking at the wrong year. May 26, 2022.
Yeah, I don't think.
We don't have that.
Yeah, last one I have, February 2nd.
21.
Can I have? Yeah.
June 21 and.
And even though it doesn't affect the.
Yeah, originally June 21, but last revised, 22, 22.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the one that was submitted most recently to the planning board.
Is that close to Adam?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Grossman?
I'm sorry, I walked in a minute to be, but I remember we sent the back to.
And the, and the planning board adopted a negative declaration.
Oh, they did.
Anthony had mentioned to us before he left that the planning board didn't have any comments. There are no, they liked the proposal is what he said.
We'll be going back through the whole planning, side plan review process.
Yeah.
Was there a reduction in the number of boat slots or whatever?
No.
There wasn't, so it was the same, same capacity.
It's basically the same, yeah. We lost a few feet.
But that didn't change your capacity. Okay.
So it was a while ago when we went through the, this application with the original presentation. I do recall it, so basically the application remains the same and you've gotten essentially the same.
Right.
And you've gotten, you know.
As I recall, you guys really loved the application and you were right about to approve it.
Well, let's get the tape.
Yeah, let's get the tape.
It was, it was on Zoom. You know, I also brought physical copies of the photos that I showed over Zoom if you want those.
Sure.
Well, that's, this is a Zoom hearing.
It was February.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Want to stand? Yep.
My first one.
Was your first meeting, Bob?
Two, three was, yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
Right, that was when we were here, yeah, February 3rd.
On TV.
On.
Thank you.
Okay.
Random pass.
Okay.
If you have any questions or want me to refresh your memory, I'm happy to do so. If you don't want to hear my whole spiel again, I'm fine with that as well.
I remember it was.
I remember.
It was a good spiel.
Okay, good.
All right, so we have some pictures.
It's resort waterfront business. It's well screened from the road and from the residential areas.
Was that a question on the one side about the screening?
There is, there was a question on the south side. And I spoke with the homeowner today. What they would like to do is add a stockade fence along the property line on the south side to basically provide privacy for himself from the cottages.
Right.
If you look at the last picture here, figure 12, there's some cedar trees that are actually on the adjacent property.
Is that where you want to put the fence?
And they would put.
They want to put the fence?
They wanted to put the fence along that property line.
That makes sense.
The south side.
That makes sense.
Which would be similar to what's happening on the northeast side in figure 10.
I see this, yeah.
There, there's mature woods on, on the adjacent property. But he priced out fencing and priced out evergreen trees and fencing's significantly less expensive.
And he'd be willing to do that? Okay, so that would be a condition of.
And that would go all the way down to the wetlands. It would just be which.
By the houses.
Where the house.
Yeah.
Along where the, parallel to where the boats would be stored to screen them.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? It's not, there isn't anyone in the room, so is there anyone waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Lester? This is for property located at 17 Allenson Lane in Hampton Bay. If you're waiting to be heard on Zoom, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands. And it is mine. I would move that we close the public hearing except for written submissions. Deadline for written submissions will be the 19th of August and we will have a decision ready on September 1st.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks so much, Mrs. Anna.
You too, have a good day.
You too. Thanks. Okay.
All right.
Decision time, folks.
I think so.
It is, huh? Decision time, folks.
I think so.
It is, huh? Who's the decider?
Well, let's see what we got here.
Tonight, I don't have any.
I have a few to read. Okay. I have a decision in the matter of the application of Jesse Getling. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Number 900-186-170.1. This application is for property located at 145 Newtown Road, Hampton Bays. The applicant here requests a variance to legalize an enclosed rear entrance to a cellar that has been on the premises for at least 40 years. This board received correspondence in opposition to the application as it relates to the rental and oversight of the premises.[1505.88]